Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming in this evening, Joe.
Thank you all, Joe.
It's gonna be a little busier later, I think. So, a couple of things are added to tonight's agenda. We had a couple of non-publics we need to take care of to start the meeting out. Then we're gonna have a discussion with our library trustees. Pratt Pond Association's coming in to further discuss that driveway/wetlands issue. We'll have a roundtable discussion, and then our public hearing tonight at 7:00 in regards to weight limits on River Road. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, Jason, to go into non-public.
Are you all here for the library?
We're all here for the library.
Wow.
We are.
We're together.
We are.
Well, I don't know what to go with.
Can I get in here later?
Not at all, as long as you can, as long as you can do it from behind your head.
I'll probably relocate a little bit.
That sounds great. This is gonna be very short.
That's what we like.
So you think?
Short and sweet.
Well, that's the hope, anyway. That's the goal.
Just like Gretchen, short and sweet. Just like grab sheet. Yeah, 10 minutes. I heard Gretchen. I would want my grab sheet to be short and sweet.
You stick your head out with the box all day?
No, I just wanna be here in case she wants to go. My car was getting rusty.
We have a nice little internet here, don't we? Interesting.
There we go. I was thinking about that.
Okay, here we go. All right. Thank you all very much. Good evening. So, my name is Gretchen. I was here last year in my first my first go-around with our warrant request. And I came with Brenda, but this time, we have more trustees present just to show that we are really moving up in the world, and we're really kinda getting things together. And our management, we just have so much more oversight. We've done so many trainings and learnings, and really how to be the best library trustees that we can. And we're all volunteers, so.
That's our website.
So this, one of our greatest achievements this year was our brand-new website. So we moved on from the early 2000's WordPress format, and we had this platform donated by a trustee, and created by trustee, all volunteer help. I'm a little biased, 'cause I actually am the one who did the work. But I really believe that this is going to be a much clearer opportunity for our residents to be able to access, especially in a digital world with library options. It's very important that we allow folks access to resources and information online, and not necessarily in hardbook form. We are very realistic in that. We understand that that's really the direction that the world is moving in. But there's also a really big investment that we have to make, because that's a big change for how the library has been run in the past. Just the way the world is. But you will see, we have a very active, if it will load, very active Friends of the Library.
Yeah, I think it's frozen, because isn't the pop-up supposed to come up?
Yeah, I think it's just, it's...
Try to access it again, 'cause it went a little further last time.
Let's see. There we go. So we have a very active fundraising committee, which we call the Friends of the Library. They're the 501(c)(3) wing of being able to bring money into the services that we provide. So if anyone is interested, we are having our brand-new cookbook, community-wide cookbook, on sale. You will see all of your neighbors and families who have submitted a recipe.
How many recipes is it approximately?
We have 80 pages, so what did that say?
Over 100 recipes.
Yeah. So yeah, so check out the...
With little stories, too.
Yeah, check out the website. All right, moving on. So, we've had a huge year. Let's do slideshow. There we go.
If you just click on this thing up at the top, the fourth one, way, way at the top, right there. Nope, way, way at the top.
Yeah.
Click on that.
There we go. Fantastic. Thank you much. So, we just wanted to say that we have been energized. We are very focused. We pulled together the first board retreat last February, where we did a lot of strategic thinking and trying to pull together some plans, and really kinda trying to discover, one, what our community needed, and we're interested in pursuing, and how we could, on our budget, be able to provide what they were asking. But we felt that we needed some time, as trustees, to really do, you know, that brainstorming time beyond just the management, the monthly management of the library. And so we launched the new website. So, the reason that we come to you on an annual basis is because the library, obviously, as every other municipal building, club, organization, has operating needs. And so we have been trying really hard to understand why and how we spend our money. We understand that we live in a time of when things are just really expensive for everyone. And we want to make sure that every taxpayer penny is planned, is very much decided as a group with a lot of discussion. We don't want there to be any questions. We're very transparent about where we're spending our money. And what we've tried to do is to be realistic in what we're hoping to move forward with, while recognizing the reality of what today's market is looking like. So, a lot of the work that we've done has been behind the scenes in our growth. The New Hampshire Charitable Foundation was very gracious and awarded us a $9,000 grant earlier this year. And I just spent Cyber Monday and Black Friday online buying lots and lots of technology. So we'll have lots of e-readers, laptops, and Wi-Fi boosters so that we can increase our digital resources for the community. And that will all be free, free services. People do not need to rent these items. They will be able to be loaned out for free, if you are a library member. So that's kind of a big deal. We also recognize, as I'm sure the town has experienced, that it's really, really hard to get employees these days. It's really hard to keep employees these days. We are a very, very small nonprofit organization. We work on a very small budget, as I've said before. We are very lucky that our staff care about the work that they're doing. So they are working for a below-living wage. They get no benefits. There are no perks. They get a straight hourly wage. There's no overtime. And they start very, very inexpensive for an hourly wage. So we try to be much more realistic, as trustees, and provide a COLA increase, as you all have been having to experience. So, but even with that increase, they already make so little that, you know, a 7% increase is pennies. It's not substantial. So it's not like we're going overboard in our wages. It just, we have to make some sort of token that we appreciate the work that they're doing, because we don't want them to leave, because we value the work that they do. Again, I mentioned the trainings. We have really increased our insurance policies. The reason that we've done that is because of the trainings and the information sessions that we, as trustees, have been going through. The world really is a changed place. And library laws, it's just, it's a litigious society, as we all know. So we just wanna be really, really careful. Our first and foremost responsibility is fiduciary oversight. We are accountable to every single public funds that come through. And we have to report on that. And we take that very seriously. Especially as we continue to get grants in. They will be looking at our books really closely, as I'm sure you're aware. Our collaborations have increased. And I also wanted to thank you. I sent a letter earlier this year asking for a handicap painted space down in front of the library, in the public parking space. You all did that for us. Thank you very much. We are trying to make sure that we are within federal law. All right. So, our warrant article request this year. We wanted to just highlight the fact we very much recognize that our annual request is a lot of money. We know that. And we appreciate the fact that you even consider why we have to ask for this money every year. We try very hard annually to figure out what can we give for what we get. Because our ultimate goal is to provide as many free services to the New Ipswich residents as we possibly can without drawing down too much from our assets. We speak with our advisors. I track all of the statements on a monthly basis. And I'm in contact with our financial advisors on a continual basis. And as you know, the Federal Reserve can be a little fluky. And so we have to be very, very careful about the drawdowns that we take. So I think that we've hit a really good balance between what we ask for the public, what we pursue as volunteers for grants, and, you know, free money that's out there, as well as what we hope that the community will support to keep our doors open. And with that balancing act, as you can see, our operating budget is about $10,000 more than it was last year. And much of that is based on the fact that we accounted for getting the New Hampshire Charitable Trust grant, which was all of our technology increases, which is really exciting. But that also means that everything else stayed really flat. And as you know, personnel is always the highest line item. Go ahead.
Could I ask, how many employees is covered with that 55,000?
Sure. So we have one full-time library director, and she makes a salary. And again, no benefits, no paid time off. We have what we call pages, which are the folks that loan out the library books and at the circulation decks. And we have, what, three?
Melanie, Nate, I think she's the two.
Yeah. And then we have one maintenance person, one grounds person, who does our winter care and our summer lawn mowing. So, I mean, he's very, very minimal.
Cleaning lady.
Clean lady, yep. And she's just about a couple of hours a week.
And one, so the people who run, Nate and Melanie have different titles. The, Ginny is the page.
Yes. But again, I mean...
Five or six different?
Yes, but they're all part-time, very limited hours. The bulk of that is our library director. Yeah, but that's just because she's salaried. So again, you know, it's tough. It's a balancing act. We would love to bump up our services. We would love to bump up our ability to do programming. We just have to be realistic. I mean, it would be really easy to ask for another $10,000 just to get a few more programs a year. We don't want the community to just say, "Well, aren't they greedy?" You know, we really wanna be respectful of people in town and what they're willing to get behind. And if we think, if we can show our value, that's the hope of the trustees, to really be appreciated for the things that we're offering for free.
The average program costs 800...
Speak louder, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The average program costs about 800 to $1,000. And we try to offer one a month. So programming alone would be 12 grand. And...
It could be.
It could be. But we really try hard to get as many grants. We use the...
Stern's Burton.
Stern's Burton a lot for the kids, or a lot of the animal, and interactive things that we have. We really try hard to keep those costs as low as possible.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, I think our community relationships and trying to continue to use resources from other organizations jointly. We share, they share. We all pool all of our limited resources together is really the goal. Because, you know, we understand that in order to run the programs and services, we need things like more public parking, larger community gathering spaces. We are limited to 25 people due to fire code. And if anybody, any group wants to rent the back, the back meeting space, it really only seats about 10 people. And that's crowded. So having an option to be able to go to a larger community space would be great. And I know that we're working on some broadband resources, but to get speedier internet would be fantastic.
Or reliable. It's spotty at the library right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the community gathering space, you know, we've tried, we tried to reach out with the rec center last year, or was it two years ago now?
Two years ago.
And it didn't work out, but it's still always in the back of our mind. Mitch brought up opportunities, perhaps, with this coming year for more smaller groups to get together and rather than all trying to fight for our own, maybe pool resources and continue that community spirit of trying to do the best for our community together, rather than in separate entities, which would help financial costs across the board also.
The school superintendent actually, you know, said that a whole big chunk of the SAU building is unused right now and operated for potential town use. So I don't know if that's an avenue with the superintendent that you could explore.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, once COVID was done, you know, we had one of the kids, I forget, the wild animals thing, we did at one point. We collaborated with them to have it there, that way we didn't have to worry about putting a limit on the kids. We could have as many kids show up as possible.
Yeah. So does any trustees have any other contributions that you'd like to make to any of the numbers or programs, or?
You know, I've been a trustee for, with the library for just under a year now. And to kind of echo what Gretchen was saying, I've seen a lot of initiative taken this year to plan for how the library can kind of transform to not only more of a digital world, but to provide assistance to those in the community without necessarily people having to come into the library. There are many reasons why people can't come in. All sorts of barriers. And so part of our strategic planning is to come up with ways to try to tackle that and eliminate some of those barriers so more people can take advantage. We've also taken a serious look at how to diversify the programs that we offer. Certainly, there's a huge focus on programming for kids. But we recognize that services for older adults, things that might interest them, activities that the library can provide for them is as important, especially for those who are otherwise isolated or don't have ease of access to activity. And I know that this year, in some of the programs and the activities that I've participated in, either in going and actually hands-on helping or just to observe, we're getting, I think this year, a much greater cross-section of ages coming into the library. One of the things that we've set up for the new technology is our own database so that we can come forward in future years to the selectmen and also be transparent with the community to show the variety of services that are provided through the library and what the level of utilization is, whether it's people coming in with information or referral questions, not necessarily library-related, but still looking for some help in the community. Whether it's people coming in, we, for instance, offer tax assistance. We want to offer more assistance with people who want to sign up for the oil discount programs based on their income. So we kind of envision the library becoming a hub that puts us beyond just the book kind of vision of a library. We want it to be more of a...
Community service.
A community service where a lot of people can go and either get their needs met or be directed to the resource that will help them. And so that's part of our vision for the future of the library.
Thank you, Mitch.
I think I should take a turn to speak, although I prepared anything I know and what I'm gonna say. But I've lived in Ipswich all my life. I think I was in sixth grade when I first took my first book out, and I was really excited about it. And I went home and I told my mother I took the book, and she said, "Why did you do that? Your older brother took a book out and never brought it back."
That find is huge by now. No kidding.
Oh, I should have said...
Did you see that old book that recently came out?
I didn't... Oh, why do I even talk? Anyway, and I was there over the years. I mean, I've served on the board. And we've had people that have been very active at keep it going. Some of the older residents at that, and could understand the transition from the olden times to the newer times. What put me on the board this time was Ann Soini. She said, "Earl," and I'm going, "Yeah." And she says, "I'm thinking of resigning, and I'd like to go on the board to, you know, keep it together." And I'm thinking, "Okay, here we go." But Ann and I were old friends. We brought together, and I couldn't say no. So even though I'm on the board, and yet it's not about me, so I'm not gonna say anything about me anymore. But I've been very impressed with this. Don't take this about me. I'm beyond all scrutiny. The younger group of people who are involved in the library...
I'll take you over.
Me too.
Me too.
I'll take you over, I'm younger anyway. Keep going. You've been the best.
You do it just to humor me. But, no, I forgot what I was gonna say. It's a little over my whole speech.
You're impressed with us?
I am. What else?
It's a team effort.
So, I don't know what else to say. If you have any questions of me with my, you know, whatever, and I was gonna say with my background, but I don't know, whatever. I've just been so impressed with the direction that the library's been going in the last, well, the number of years that you people have gotten on board.
Thank you, Earl. That means a lot, actually.
And I think, I think I was probably, I can't remember who was on the board as we were looking for library people to come on the board. And as soon as somebody came along, and they said, "Yeah, we're interested." It's like, "Good. Come join us. Come join us. Come join us." And then there was one time when I thought, "Okay, what am I doing? I mean, maybe they'll all just take library books out and never bring them back." And, but they've worked out so well. I'm very impressed with all these people. And I want to resign again at some point.
Not now.
You have to find a replacement.
So that's all I'm gonna say. And if you have any questions, run it by these two and filter them for me.
Thanks, Earl.
Do you have any questions, Chris?
Yeah, every year it comes up. You know, why do we support the library? So it's kind of, you did, you know, a pretty good job of, you know, through your... Sorry.
Presentation.
A little off tonight. Yeah, the presentation, you know, answered a lot of that. And I do, I have noticed some differences myself since sitting in this seat over just the last, you know, few, four years of, you know, how the ask has been made. So there's definitely, there's a lot of, you know, ask for more content from the select board. And I feel like we're getting some of that. One question I do have, too, is do you guys track the attendance of each program?
Yes.
We do.
And then also that bigger number of an estimate of how many community members are served per day?
Absolutely. And that's what Mitch was referencing about...
We set up a database that tracks each program, the number of people that come in, by age group as well. But all the other activities, like for us, it's just the number of people who come in to look for a book, not necessarily for a program. But we have, I think, 12 different data points that we track, programs, other kinds of services. How many people come in for computer assistance? Because we have somebody who comes in and provides that kind of guidance, just to see if this is actually helping to meet community needs. And so when we get together for our retreat, which will be shortly after the holidays, be able to take a look at that, analyze it, and see what worked well, what didn't work, why did it not work? And then we'll talk about some of the new initiatives that we want to start for the new fiscal year.
That was one of the things we had hoped to be able to present tonight. It was one of the changes that we had made. And with change comes training and discipline. And unfortunately, to use the database isn't always the most comfortable for some people. So it's all in a mess. We need to transpose that for us. So we're hoping next year that we keep it more so that we could just present it to you any time of the year and be able to show you guys.
Excellent. Yeah, that would really help. And even not just us, but to post it on your website to people.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Right. Now, there is, at the end of the year, Michelle collects, Michelle's always collected all this, and she does put that into a library report that's...
It's a state, it's a state report.
Where you can go and compare us. We brought some of that last year to you guys to sort of compare us to other libraries. And we didn't want to go down that route again. We had already done that with you guys.
Yeah, I remember that in the presentation.
All right, so I did have just one comment before you do. Jennifer?
Yeah, just had a quick question. There was mention of the Friends of the Library doing, being part of fundraising efforts. And some of the things that you guys spoke about, the library needs are speedy internet, parking, community space, digital technology, services for all demographics. So my question is, have you guys sought community involvement? Any fundraising efforts towards the goal? And what does that look like for you guys in the future?
Wonderful. You want to join the Friends of the Library?
She does a knock, and I never spread anything.
We won't poach her.
Sorry.
We won't poach her.
Sorry, Jenny. That's okay. So Jen, a lot of the funds that the Friends do make, what we do is we keep those funds separate. And then when we have a need with the library, we ask the Friends, "Hey, can you help support this need?" And they will hand over some of those casts, those funds, to help support those needs. So, things like technology, or books, or some... So things like technology or books or something special, we can use that extra money that we make to help pay or offset some of those costs. Does that answer our question?
Yeah, so just the only fundraiser, I've only lived in town for four years, but the only fundraiser I've seen is the cookbook.
The Friends of the Library is new this year.
Okay.
And the...
It's renewed.
It's renewed this year.
Renewed.
We're working on other things for next year. We've given the goal maybe one a quarter, something, you know. It's very small move right now, but we're working on maybe a bigger and better.
And the cookbooks are now out and available?
They are.
Dave?
Does the library actually have a report in the town report?
Yep.
Okay. One of the things that I think gets lost is that I always wondered, why don't we have a classic public library, but it was set up as a public-private partnership to some degree. And I think if, it would certainly help if you do a recap of why we have the scenario that we have.
That's fabulous.
Part of that report, because that way I think it'll be, this decision for this partnership...
Was it in the early 1900s?
Right. And I think why, it would certainly help people get over the hump of, I don't understand.
Why is it like this?
Right.
It's the question we get all the time.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the trust fund? Was the trust fund set up with a mission statement?
Yes.
What is that mission statement?
It is the trustees into perpetual care of the funds. So we are 100% fiduciarily responsible for managing those funds into perpetuity. So we cannot spend it to what's gone. We are not allowed by law to do that.
Right. So is there goals or future plans to keep the trust fund, like, open? Who are the people that originally opened the trust? Are there names? Like, how can the community know about that?
Absolutely. So it is, we have a financial advisor out of...
The Wills Land?
Out of Keene. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Out of Keene. And we have an annual report every year that you are more than welcome to come in and look at. It talks about all the funds that we agree as a trustee group every October as to what percent that we're willing to invest in. So we have an investment letter of agreement. So those funds, and we pay that advisor to make sure that we don't overspend our money. That's really important.
I just think if the community maybe had like a little blurb or something about us...
Yeah, your questions, I think, are really good questions. And to piggyback onto these comments as well, I think it'd be good to put an explanation on the website about the historical, starting of the library, what its legal status is, what its relationship is to the town and so forth.
I would also add some of the information you gave us last year.
Okay.
I'm contrasting how much a municipal, fully municipal-owned library is costing other towns.
Substantially.
I remember that.
Substantially.
Yeah, so that's good information to have. And we had the same thing with the ambulance gave us that comparison.
Yeah.
And sometimes these private cooperations are beneficial for everyone.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for saying that.
And it's okay, though. It's, you know, especially in a small town, it makes it feel like a small-town library, you know?
Right. We're in this together where we really, it's not an us and them situation. We are here to serve the entire community and that means the entire community, so...
The last thing I'll say, and I'm so sorry, is that just as a resident and somebody who would love to use our own New Ipswich library, I choose to go elsewhere. I pay libraries for other library cards because they have better resources, better items that we can check out. Like I can check out Netflix or certain things, so I would... Those are the things that we want to key in on and be able to offer you. So you're the type of person that I need you to come to start our library and tell us so that we can know what you need. No, right now, we serve, we serve as the same sort of group that keeps coming and we're trying to expand that group and we're trying to see what do the new people need, what do they want to see? And that's what we need.
So I just thought something to keep in mind, I would, is like that the community, I don't think feels like, like there's enough outreach to know about the library, so...
Have you seen us at the transfer station?
I know.
Because that is my favorite. I love to sit there and talk about the library. It's fabulous.
We put a table there every year to let each other...
That's okay.
But that's exactly it. We need to get these groups of people together more. We're kind of all working our, in our little comfort zones and we don't share with one another. You know, the rec center people, they do a fantastic job, too. We never collaborate, you know, we try and get there, next time we will, you know? And then you get more people involved and you get more information.
It sounds like you guys are almost primed, like, to that point of organization, you know, like, to answer some of the hard questions, you know, that were kind of, ah, it's a gray area, but they're major grays, like in that rec center, you know, scenario. So you guys are getting there and, you know, like, the rec committee's just got to get, you know, we'd be at that same point, too.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
The one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the facilities themselves. The library, in my mind, is not adequate to service the people in this town. And I think at some point, I don't know when it's going to come, but it hasn't come in all these years that we need more space, more modern space so that people can stay in town and get the benefits of the library here rather than going to these other...
And paying for cars in other towns. Absolutely.
And we have a sense of pride about what we're doing, but that's a big step to take from where we are.
Yeah.
To be able to get a modern building, you know, even if it's 50 years old, it'd be more modern than that.
The space doesn't matter to us.
And we love the building, we love the building respectfully and all that.
We love the schoolyard.
But if we, I almost think you need to start from an architect and engineer and say, "What does a library need?" Rather than trying to...
Well, we...
But I'm the wrong person to be talking because I don't have the $10 million to put into it.
Yeah.
We're getting quick on our 40 minutes, so...
Yeah, and I appreciate the modest increase in what you guys have been able to do with the money, you know, that you have available to you and to address so many issues. You know, I wish it were that simple here sometimes.
Yeah.
But I definitely appreciate that, you know, public-private partnership.
Again, we've stepped up the fundraising to help offset that because we realize that, too.
And that was, it's so hard, you know. Do you guys ever see yourselves being able to decrease the ask? And I guess the fundraising, you know, efforts would help address that.
If somebody would die and leave us a huge bequest...
I was going to say similar to that.
I'm sorry. I'm just very direct.
Shaun, just to clarify, that is not one of our strategic...
Just to piggyback on what Shaun said.
Sure.
I'm sure a lot of you have received your tax bills and were a little bit like, "Oh, man, this digs into Christmas."
Yes, it does.
We have that and last night in our meeting with the planning board and the finance advisory committee, it was noted next year is a year of revaluation.
Yes.
And after the meeting last night, I talked with one of the assessors and he said, "You guys better be careful because it's a perfect storm situation. If this budget comes in," and not just the town budget, but the whole warrant, "if that comes in high, it's going to be magnified by the revaluation." So it's going to be a challenging, challenging year for us to...
Who said that? Who said that?
Who's in there?
Anyways.
Yeah, I mean, and the thing, well, and the thing for us that we remember frequently is that we're not, we're not living in a bubble. We recognize that New Ipswich is part of all our neighboring towns, the state, the nation. We're not unique in the fact that we're all struggling, you know? We're all struggling.
And it comes to the homes.
Absolutely.
A lot of them are trying their best to keep food on the table and keep the lights on.
And I'll be honest with you, when those times hit and they have, they do reach out to the library for museum visits, they reach out to us for state passes to state parks and stuff. So that is when we are there for them at most.
Yeah. And I just say that...
No, not we...
So that people will understand that it's going to be a challenging year for us.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much and it was...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
You're staying. You staying?
What's next?
I don't know, not me. How can I, Pratt Pond is next.
Did I get the slideshow from them, right? To post it to, or do you want, do you have a copy of this?
I have a copy of it, yeah. I was going to email it and get the...
We can send it to a time. Do you have it onetime?
No, but it's all right, I can scan it.
And you write that way over?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Congratulations on your five-year commitment to stand board.
If you don't die by then...
All right, so next up...
Don't you worry, snackers.
And I have real kids, too.
No.
Have a good night, Earl.
Good night. Thank you.
You want me to start?
Sure, yeah. You can warm us up, Joe.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so a couple weeks ago, we came back, talked to you about a low Pratt Pond resident that put a driveway on top of the Pratt Pond Dam. The driveway he put on doesn't have a permit, it's within the wetlands buffer. He's got adequate frontage in his property to put a driveway anywhere else. We'd asked the town to step in, take a look at it and see what can be done to help us stop that. The impact that we have is, you know, first off, it doesn't meet the town requirements, the town zoning ordinances, driveway regulations, but it also blocks our access to maintain the dam. So we've been going back and forth with them. We brought some material there to maintain the dam, to fix some erosion problems. He has since filed the lawsuit against us claiming that that portion of the dam is his. He owns it because he now has his driveway there. And he's claiming because he's got his driveway there that he's got a right of way to the road. Right of way doesn't say it can go over the dam, but the old subdivision documents aren't crystal clear that says, "No, there's a dam here." The summons to appear in court doesn't even mention that there's a dam there. All the documentation says it's his driveway, doesn't recognize it as a primary driveway, this is a secondary one, and it makes us look bad. So, but it doesn't meet the town requirements, so that's why I brought it to your attention to say, you know, what can we do?
All right, yeah, so we did, we asked our building inspector, code enforcer, Gary, to go out and take a look at it and Jason was actually able to, you know, go along with him, so at that point, Jason, if you could kind of let us know.
Yeah, well, Gary and I went out there and the first thing we did was measured and we don't know where wetlands begin. We just went right down to the brook we saw in iron pin there and so we measured it and it was like, oh, 30 feet. I think it was about what we came up with.
30 feet?
No, I'm saying right to the brook. Whatever. It's okay. So we were standing outside talking and then Dean, the owner, came home and he invited us in to talk. And so we got all of his side of the story, which you touched on a little bit there. Yeah, there's some deep disputes or however the legal terms are with that. And he claimed that that driveway was an existing driveway. And he had asked the previous code enforcement officer, can he top that or does he need a permit for it? This was because he had a permit and the inspector was there inspecting some work he did and he asked him and they, he said, "Well, no, it's an existing driveway, you don't need a permit to put more gravel on it." And I understand that is not what you guys told us.
Yeah.
And so after we had our discussion with him, we went back outside and Gary's opinion at that time, I don't know if it still is, was, "Ooh, we better be careful." Because we had also received news that there was a summons, or is that the word for a summons to court? And very quick, like on the 28th of this next month, it seemed like, in the interest of the town, the wise thing to do would be to wait and see what the court says. That was just between Gary and I, we haven't discussed it. We had a little bit of a non-public, just to brief, and that was the basis of our talk in the non-public, but no votes were made.
Okay. So a couple of things. So Dwayne and I went there and measured from the surface water at the dam on the pond side to the boundary stake, which was just about 50 feet. It might have been a little bit over 50 feet, but clearly the start of his driveway is 40 feet, you know, away, maybe 38 feet probably.
Oh, I mean, if you wanted to know, technically, we just walked down to the river.
Okay, so keep in mind that that boundary is a horizontal boundary, so if you go around a tree, it's not going to work, you know, it's got to be a horizontal boundary.
Whatever it is, I mean, the wetlands, because there was also a claim made that maybe on a gravel driveway, there's a different setback required. Gary looked into it, I followed up with him and he said, "It is no different. It's a 50-foot." So whatever you may come up with, we saw it dirty, but we're no experts.
Okay.
We're not surveyors either.
So I would ask you to re-verify that because from the, from the, from the brook, Dwayne and I measured 50 feet.
To the far side of the driveway.
To the far side of the driveway.
He's probably close with his 30 feet.
Yeah.
Probably 30 feet to the edge of his driveway.
Right where his driveway started.
Yeah, and we measured to the opposite side of his driveway, so his whole driveway is within him.
Oh, I see. So you're 30 feet before the start of the driveway.
It sounds like we're both on the same page.
Okay, I guess you're now, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I'm reading the backwards.
Right.
Oh, thank you.
So that wetlands aspect kind of gets into that grandfather...
You can get up and smack me.
Grandfather didn't zone if I could, like, or, because there's other scenarios right across the street, you know, that you're, the driveway is clearly closer, like closer to the pond than 50 feet or...
So, and that's another good point, too, but that's a grandfather driveway that can't spend there for 60 years, long before the zoning requirements are...
Hold on, Dwayne, if you can, just one second.
So I understand, he brought that up, too, he said, "Well, but that's been there for, you know, 60 years, 80 years probably, but the subdivision's only been there for, you know, 20 years, 15 years, 18 years, whatever it was." So although I don't like that driveway there, the state doesn't like that driveway there, there's no control over it. This one here is clearly in violation. We can stop it now and what's going to happen is when he plows that driveway, all that snow is just going to roll right into the dam and then we've got major erosion problems. So that's the real concern is that, you know, you could put a driveway there in the summertime and probably not have a big impact, but when you plow that snow right there, it's going to wash out the dam. So that's why we've got setback varnish so that...
If you don't mind, Dwayne, I'm just going to, do you go quick?
I just want to point out, and this is not my phrase, it comes from somebody else, there is no such thing as grandfathered. So I would just encourage everybody to try to avoid using that word for, I don't know what that means for specificity, but I just want to make sure that legally there is no grandfather.
So I guess existing would be...
When it comes to traguard. And like I said, I just, I want us to be cautious in our wording and I don't know what that means for what the replaceable word would be. I'm just offering that to try not to use the word grandfather.
Just for clarification... Just for clarification, then, the spirit of that word does have legal weight. Or does it mean?
My understanding is.
You must fix.
In the driveway regulations, there is no grand, I forgot about that.
There is no grandfather in the state or our regs.
But there is a, there is a law that says you can't make a law that's retroactive.
It specifically opposes that for driveways.
Right.
For driveway regulations, grandfathering.
That's why I'm bringing it up, is, I would caution us just to try to avoid the word, and you can bring that back to your attorney. I'm just gonna say, for, for tonight's discussion, you may wanna try and avoid the word as much as you can.
I'd like to understand what you're saying, because I think it's a really important thing. Kind of off-subject, right?
No.
Actually, this is, this is very much on-subject.
Well, I can explain the grandfather, if you guys give me a chance to speak here.
There is no grandfather.
Well, what she's talking about, grandfather.
Dwayne, I appreciate your patience, I can see you're getting a little tense, like, right now, if you can just please, like, reset. And I think that was a very good point that Dee was making, to understand it.
It's a great point, but I can explain that.
I am, I truly appreciate how impassioned you are about this, and like, what is happening down in your area of the community. So, but please, alright, go ahead.
Can I show you this, though? This subdivision is running to effect in nineteen ninety-six. Okay, there's deeds on here, this is the map that Mr. Pacheco showed you, right here, of this subdivision. Alright, here's the lower road over here. Here's the spillway. This whole piece right here is our dam, okay? His driveway, the secondary driveway that he put in, went in, did you look at the pictures that we gave you, supplied last week? You can clearly see that there was a fence across there, there was no driveway there in two thousand twenty-two. So this driveway went in in the past year, it wasn't an exist, it was not an existing driveway. This right here is the plat for the Pratt Pond property. Done by a licensed engineer, Ed Rogers, licensed in the state of New Hampshire, okay? Shows, here's the lower road, this comes across. Here's our spillway here. Here's our corner point of our property, and this is part of map three, lot sixty-eight. Mr. Pacheco's driveway comes in between this corner of our lot and right here. This whole berm is the dam, which we own.
Is there a deed or anything that says?
There, there is a deed.
There's a whole bunch of them.
The Pratt Pond's.
It's map three sixty-eight.
Yes, that we owned the dam, the law, the flowage rights. The pond, uh, half of the pond, actually, because somebody else owns the other half.
There was, no, there was a, there was an iron pin that somebody removed and waved.
We, we replaced, the last time we had Mr. Rogers come out and resurvey the dam was when, Joe, when was the last time Ed came out and resurveyed?
He came out this year, April.
Yeah, April this year, I thought it was in the fall, late fall, early fall. At any point, somebody had taken this marker here and pounded it about three inches down into the ground, which is right on the edge of Mr. Pacheco's driveway that he put in, okay? That all being said, as far as zoning goes, the zoning ordinances were in place long before the subdivision was established. And the fifty-foot wetland setback was in place long before subdivision was established. Okay? And I'm under the understanding, and I believe I'm correct, that it is the selectman's duty to enforce violations of zoning ordinances. Is that not correct, correct?
It is, no, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, it's a clear violation of the zoning.
And then, there's other cases where people come in and say it's clear, and it's shown that it's actually not that clear, and where that existing element comes into play.
But it wasn't, it wasn't existing. This went in between June of twenty-two and this spring, this driveway was put in. There was never a driveway, we showed you pictures where fences were across there, it was lawn before Mr. Pacheco bought the property.
Was it like a parking spot or something?
No, it was just like a, it's, no, it's just the lawn, where the lawn came.
Because it seems like an odd cut to have, it looks very natural going down there, like.
He definitely did, I mean, they have branches, I mean, in fact, it's Tom, Tom Moran, who, his uncle Dave owned that place. He said it used to be, it gets overgrown.
But even then, it's still, it's still a new point, because this is ninety-six. These ordinances went into place in eighty-seven, so it's still in violation. There's no grandfathering.
Should that, and this is where I was trying to get at with Dean, should we be going around town and measuring driveways? No, I'm serious, there's no such thing as grandfathering.
That was part of the.
And as Dwayne pointed out, we are ordered by law to enforce these things, should we be doing that?
Um, I'm gonna step out and say that we have not had any dialogue on this with the planning board, okay? The dialogue that we had revamping the ordinance was that we were, we would not, this, although the state give, help me a little bit, although the state gives us the right to go after violators, it, that, that the intention was not to do that, but if there was a complaint, we were then bound to investigate it.
Correct.
Okay, the other point that I wanna make that is really nippy key, and I, I'm only trying to be helpful, I don't have a, a dog in the fight, right? Is that, an, an approval to, to potentially put a driveway is different than the permit to actually construct the driveway. So plating it out just says we intend to do it, but if there wasn't actually an exact driveway there, and the plan wasn't approved for that, that driveway, then you'd have to get the driveway permit.
Right, that was part of the struggle we had, I'm, I'm saying.
No, you're good, you're good.
I was proud of it.
Yeah, yeah.
When we were doing the driveway regulations was because the state said, you, you can't, there is no grandfathering, so this is every driveway in town. So there was the argument, so what are we supposed to do, go around town and, and anyone whose driveway doesn't fit the driveway regulations, we have to give them a ticket? Like, what do we do?
But what we do.
Well, no, you wouldn't give them a ticket, you would demand them to fix it.
Right.
Right, which we have that.
So, but the state does not encourage people, you know.
What does that mean?
You're not supposed to do.
Because now we get into a situation like this, what does that mean now? The state doesn't encourage it, and yet, the state demands that we enforce the codes, so the tape measures must come on.
Yeah, but if it's brought to your attention.
Is that what the state says?
Well, this is, it's, it's, what I'm gonna call, based on recent history, the good neighbor effect, right? Is if you're a good neighbor, and your neighbor moves in, and you know what's going on, and you communicate what's going on, it's when somebody decide, and, and again, I, I don't, I'm gonna put some, I'm gonna say something that's inadvertent, but when somebody actually files a complaint, now we are bound to look at it. So an example that is not related to this is that when, when the water comes out of somebody's driveway into the road, and it creates an ice spot, now there's a safety issue, there's an immediate need for the selectmen to respond, right? As opposed to, this is, if you're starting to get erosion that could lead to additional changes, does that, that, does that raise the stakes? And that's what I'm, and, but not my discussion, but I'm trying, but again, be helpful a little bit.
And it is helpful, because this is a really difficult terrain to navigate.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I don't think that this is something that anybody involved enjoys.
Not even a little bit, it keeps me awake at night.
And it shouldn't.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
So the, the challenge we have, you know, that's why it brought to your attention, is, is, you know, I, I've been on Pratt Pond since two thousand four. I used to drink beer with Dave Cotton at the dam all the time, I know that area pretty well, there was never a driveway there. As long as I've known, there's a fence there. Got, I shared a picture of a fence, it's been there for twenty years, it's a, it's a post-in rail fence. That wasn't a driveway, we get pictures from Google Earth, there's no driveway there, we get, showed you pictures of the lawn, there's no driveway there. So, so there's plenty of pictures, say, there's no driveway there, unless you wanna go to Google and say, is that picture wrong, did you edit the picture? And realistically, you could look on your phone right now to Google Earth, you're gonna see that the picture they took was done in two thousand twenty-two, and there's no driveway there. So whatever he tells you, the pictures are gonna conflict with that, and just look at the pictures of the fence in there, because that's an old poster rail fence, it's not a new fence, it's not a year-old, that's a twenty-year-old fence, been there as long as I have been. So, so that's the challenge, he's in wetlands, we got pictures that says there's no driveway there. We've been maintaining that dam, you know, I've been there, working the dam since two thousand four, and we've used that spot. You know, so it's not like there's a driveway there, and there's a problem, there's no cars parked there, that's, we used that spot. So, and that's the reality, is, is, okay, and we, we were fortunate that we got pictures. You know what, because I don't, I don't walk around the pond and take pictures of people's driveways, it just turned out that when the Cotton sold their house, Redfin took pictures of the lawn, that's how I got pictures. So, but it clearly shows, there's no driveway there.
Ma'am?
I also would go visit Hazel and Dave, and there was a pathway from their house by the dam for the grandchildren to go to the camp. Because it was safer for them, instead of walking down the road, to cross over the property to the camp. It was just a pathway, it was never a road, it was never an idea of a road, it was never a parking space, it was just a pathway. And if you can get information from Hazel that says that, I don't know, I mean, it was never a driveway.
I don't think it's a good idea to bring Hazel in.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, when I would go visit them, it was a pathway, you could clearly see there was a path, a walking pathway. It wasn't for vehicles.
Okay, sorry.
So I've lived out there twelve years, you know, a real long time. I live up the road from Dean's place, so I walk by there twice a day, walk the dog twice a day by there. And there's never been a driveway before he put this one up, it was just bushes, no driveway at all.
Can I get your name, sorry?
Dan Mason.
Okay, thanks.
That's N as in Nancy, they are someone.
Thank you.
And then the other thing we, we mentioned is, is he's got quite a bit of frontage there. Is, where he placed that driveway is, is in the wetlands buffer, he can move it over twenty feet or so and be outside of that wetlands buffer, and we wouldn't have a problem at all. I've, I've known Dean for the last few years, this is the third time we've had a problem, second time lawyers involved, it's tough. We argued over the boundary, we've had measurements, we put stakes in the ground, we pointed out, we, we discussed, said, this is the boundary here. And, and then what did he do? He put his driveway on the wrong side of the boundary. That's just the type of person that we're dealing with, there's, there's no, there's no, um, you know, it's, it's not naive, that's just intentional, we, we put it on our property, and, and now that's where in the problem. So that's why we're asking for help.
Not to mention the fact that he goes over our property, because that's none of your concern.
Right.
But being within the wetlands buffer is your concern.
The way that summons is, is read also is, there's no trespassing by Pratt Pond members as well, so if we were to maintain the dam, we're gonna trespass on that property. So basically, it's written so that we can't even fix the erosion problems, so, I mean, that's not a major issue for.
You can't do any maintenance on the dam, because you have to cross this driveway.
Yeah, I mean.
Not on that side of the dam.
Not on that side.
Well, that's where they're having the boundary dispute.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Do you have the driveway regulations that they gave you last, that they gave us last week on you?
I had a question.
Because I, I believe we said, we, because it was such a bone of contention about the grandfathering thing in the driveway regs, I thought we put something in there saying, this is for existing and new driveways, something to that effect. Now that you said that, I kind of brought it all back.
There, there is a, uh, there is a clause in the zoning ordinance about pre-existing non-conforming use. It says land or buildings, I think I might have copied the wrong ones, but it says, shall be deemed a non-conforming use, and when such use is discontinued for one year, such lands and or buildings, it says, I think I got the wrong one, become subject to Article X dot D. So within the zoning, I believe it refers to structures, as, as well as buildings, but, but I'm not, I'm not the right one.
With our driveway regulation, a driveway is a structure.
Yes.
Which is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, interesting.
So even if somebody's coming out and saying nineteen seventy-five, there was a driveway there, it wouldn't apply, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, last time we met, you guys were gonna check with town council to see that if you had the authority to regulate driveways on a private road, and to see if you had the authority to issue a cease and desisted, do you have a year back on that?
Yes, I'm yes.
Not really to my satisfaction, I don't believe the question was specifically answered. It kept referring to the same RSA, which gives authority for roads, and then, kinda like what we were just told. The laws says do this, but, but whatever, I'm, I'm assuming it's gotta be legal, since so many towns do it.
The RSA specifically state that driveway regulations are to be accomplished by typically the, the planning board. And those would be the ones that are acceptable. The state doesn't really get into trying to dictate what the specific driveway regulations were supposed to be. Just like the part about the private road, that is not in RSA, but it is. And it, the, the state transfers the responsibility over to, to the town.
I understand from previous meetings that we've had, a private road absolutely operates under different laws. And like, I think for a time, the town would plow Pratt Pond Road, just as.
Great acre.
It's a plowed, it's graded.
Oh, graded it, sorry.
Graded it. Yeah, however that is, and the state said, oh no, you can't do that, that's a private road, that's there. But so, I, that's where I came from with, like, is there another limitation?
I got some information on that, and, and where that goes back to, and it refers, I saw it somewhere, just wanted to look it up. It's spending town funds on private roads. But not, it doesn't say anything about regulating, you know, uses, it's spending town funds on private roads is what's illegal. Like, if you put a dump truck up, now we could hire you to grade the road, we tried to do that in the past. And you could do it if we paid to have you guys do it.
That's an interesting concept.
The, uh, the road agent at the time, well, not the road agent, what, I don't know what you call, Peter Goy at the time, didn't wanna grade the road, he said his grade was too big to do the road, so we didn't pursue that anymore.
I'm saying, I know, I know Dee's comments, and, you know, hearing from Debbie, like, on that clarification, really kinda helped in this, and I know, like, I always try to err on the side of property owners, you know, because I hate, you know, people going onto other people's property and trying to make them do things that they don't, shouldn't have to do with their property, or tell them what, you know, dictate what they can and can't do with the ownership of their land. But it did really, you know, kinda put it in perspective with the wetlands buffer aspect, for me anyways, where that is an enforceable element to this.
But Rick, Rick had something to say about all of that, in some of the notes that I read. I guess when, um, I forget what it was, but Rick had told the owner that it was okay, that, that driveway had been, or a driveway had been there before, and it was okay to go ahead and continue putting another layer of, of stone on it.
So we've, we've shown pictures, we've had people that have been on the pond forever, we brought Tom Moran, who's, I don't know, five years older than me, who pretty much grew up on the pond as uncle's houses, cousins' houses, and, and we've all sworn that, that there was never a driveway there.
I understand, I understand that, I'm just going by the historical.
Right.
Documents from, from the code enforcement officer at the time.
And if what that exchange was about is true, that's definitely new gravel, that's definitely an improvement. definitely an improvement. Um, and it's most certainly, you know, only about thirty feet away from the river's edge.
Yep.
So.
And that would make sense if, if the driveway was built on the wrong side of the marking thing.
On top of the fact that it shouldn't even be there, you know, because it's a secondary driveway.
Yeah. The driveway, it does say, any permit shall be required when making changes to an existing driveway. So if you want to say it was existing, you need, still need a permit to make changes to it. Um, and then you're only allowed one driveway per property unless it's approved by the selectmen. So, so you can only have one driveway or access point.
And, you know, people do make errors in, you know, guidance that they give too.
And the state actually verified, that, that's a copy from the, uh, state RSA, which is, um, two thirty-six thirteen?
Two thirty-six thirteen, just, yeah. So it basically says that the planning board shall adopt driveway regs.
Right.
So we're gonna, uh, make a motion to place a stop work order, um, at one ten Pratt Pond Road, uh, for that secondary, uh, entrance.
So, did you feel?
Well, we can get into, if you want to chat about it, like, we'll do a second and then, um, so place the stop work order, the second, uh, with, you know, based on it being , uh, within the, the wetlands buffer zone. Is there a second?
We need this.
We, even a second, you can turn it down, like you can, you know, shoot it down.
Just, we're going to go into a discussion mode. Should we just go ahead and, I'm asking Jason because it's got to be between the two of us.
We need a second first. We need a second before discussion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just do.
Having a discussion about having the discussion.
Actually, the motion failed the second, then you go back to discussion.
And now we can have a discussion. Yeah. So I will, yeah, I'll go along with that.
So is that a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion in motion?
Um, I'd just go off of our code enforcement officers, um, recommendation that we wait. It would be December twenty-eighth where the hearing is. Um, we've involved ourselves and, and not, um, inserted ourselves, but we're in the middle of litigious action between neighbors.
So I think what, what, how about-
Drop, drop this.
It ends costly. As people will see when we go into the budget hearing season, our legal line has gone through the roof. And so to use prudence and caution, I don't know if, uh, three weeks is unacceptable.
Well, to stop, you know, any further improvement, you know, to that area. Um, and with the stop work order would do essentially would make it so that there isn't an access point there for him to plow or potentially, um, damage, um, the dam in any way. Um, and so it really doesn't hurt anything because he does, it's not like he doesn't have an access point, you know, to his property. There is one existing. So, you know, that stop work order being in place while the court stuff is being, um, you know, hammered out, doesn't hurt anything, in my opinion.
I think, I think you're, you're right. It probably wouldn't. Neither of us are lawyers. Um, if that could be thrown back at us is all that I'm just concerned about when it's so close to, um, legal action.
Well, and if, if it does, you know, we get, um, a strong opinion one way or another, it can always be lifted. It's not going to cause us any harm. Uh, but there is more harm being, you know, caused now, in my opinion.
And so this is not the same as a cease and desist.
No.
The stop work order is hanging on.
Yeah.
It's like pressing the pause button or step on that line.
And that means-
And the catch there is we're getting into cold weather and, um, yeah, there's going to be snow. There's going to be ice and there's not much more that's going to be done during that time period. And, and, and.
Yeah. So it's like, for me, you would like to restrict act, you know, access, uh, to lower Pratt altogether, like from that point. Um, and you'd have to use as primary driveway.
It may be the most prudent thing, just to issue that stop work order.
We don't know that he, he, he even going to do it. Did you get any indication when, uh, you interviewed him that he was going to continue working out?
No.
No. So make the important.
You guys have any other further discussion?
No.
No.
All right. So all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries three to O. Issue a stop work order and restrict that, yeah, restrict access to, uh, lower Pratt.
Can you, can you clarify that via this secondary driveway? We don't want to make it solid for stopping him from using his driveway in any way, shape or form.
I didn't say the secondary driveway.
It'll be, it'll be clear what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the code enforcement officer will make sure of it.
Am I, am I going to contact Gary or one of you guys?
Uh, yeah, you should.
Okay.
I've been sitting there a long time. I'm not here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good night.
Before we go on, is there all the river road, um, question, people, whatever, did everybody sign in?
No, you won't.
Sign in sheet?
I'll throw a holly.
Just want to make sure everyone signed in.
Where is it?
Um, right outside the door.
Signing sheet's outside the door?
Yeah.
You have to do that?
That'd be nice. You don't have your board. I'm just going to take, I'm going to take all your names.
Do you think that court order should, I mean, the stop work order, we should have it pending court by some, some kind of very good deal there?
Inherently it is. Anyway, it's very, they rule something and we lift it or not. Yeah. I don't think it, yeah, it's a bit redundant.
Maybe we should have this at high school.
I know. So just so guys all know, we get all cozy together for about ten minutes because we gotta wait till seven o'clock to get it all kicked off. But I appreciate everybody coming in early.
We're going to take ten?
Yeah. Yeah. Let everybody kind of settle in because we can't have any type of discussions now.
I'll be back.
I have a point of discussion. Ask for a memory of refreshment. Totally off topic. What is our policy for dollar amount of work being done and needing authorization from the select board for getting the building maintenance?
My understanding is five thousand dollars without threshold.
Yeah. We don't have a written policy.
It's somewhere.
Yeah.
We had seen it at one point, uh, reverse what was previously stated, you know, because it used to be kind of made up being the pond, whoever was in the room. You know, they put different limits on different departments. Yeah.
Hey, Sean?
Yeah.
Are you, are you still planning to cover the budget? Did you just move defer the budget to a later time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to defer that.
Defer it totally?
Uh, no, not totally, but yeah, to another week. Yeah.
Okay.
To another week?
Yeah.
All right then. Can I take ten minutes since I, my chances of being here at your next two meetings are slim to none because I'll be across the country?
Sure.
And I've been around for the last four to have this discussion with you.
All right.
Um, I wanted to just revisit the budget question about legal expenses. Um, and how that would, is going to be set up when we start, when I started on the planning board, the planning board had its own line items and there's, again, we try to set up for how much legal are we going to need? And again, legal and litigious costs seem to be on the rise.
Yeah.
But it was all folded together under one budget, knowing that you can't know if the planning board is going to have a busy year, the zoning board's going to have a busy year, or the select board's going to have a busy year. So it was all rolled together.
Yeah.
Now we're talking about unpackaging it again. And I tried to make a case to say, well, that means then I have to ask for at least fifteen thousand dollars, knowing that that's kind of the cost of one event, right? And if, if we're going to do that, then I think we need policies in place to say how it's going to work because, and, and one of the reasons why I'm here is because I thought, okay, we can do this exercise as budgeting. Why I'm concerned is that as a board chair, I can't, I, I, I'm worried that we would, that the conversation was going to be about saving money. And then I heard through my neighbors who watched the select board meeting that that very statement was made. And so I wanted to come and have the conversation with you guys to say, when we spend money as a board chair, that money is spent knowing that we're trying to prevent a cost. And, and how do we try to make the right decisions at the right time? We have three very litigious cases come before us and lawyers routinely in the room. So we were trying to make the right steps and consult when we needed to. And I guess where I'm concerned is if that is coming back to be that we should be being more diligent, either that implies that we aren't being diligent, or it implies that we shouldn't be spending the money and we should be putting potentially more risk on the town. And I feel like that conversation and communication hasn't been communicated to us as board chairs. And if we need to have that conversation, we should be having it as we're going and not how we're constructing a budget. Because that just says either, either I'm not trusted as a board chair or board chairs aren't trusted, or that instead of communicating, we're going to communicate through how we plan and budget. And I, I would rather we communicate along the way. And if you guys want justification for every attorney bill, then I can provide that. I can provide justification on every attorney bill that I spent this year. And if you guys want that ahead of time, I'm happy to do it. I'm just not sure that, that this problem is, that we're, we're not fixing the wrong problem through a budget. So I want to understand where we're coming from.
Well, understood. And so for me, that discussion, I don't remember the cost savings method. We're always looking to try to, you know, save money in general. So I don't know if it's an in general statement of, like, I don't know the context. I don't remember the context of that, like, meeting, uh, or that moment. Uh, but for, from what I understand was to offer, um, better clarity to the community of, you know, where the legal's being spent instead of just having it in one grouping. Um, and we kind of just went back and forth with, you know, the pros and cons, you know, uh, of each way. And there wasn't any one thing settled on, um, yet. And I certainly, you know, appreciate your comments.
Well, and I sent an email, but I didn't want it to be via email. I just didn't have a choice because my travel schedule has been hellacious. And so this is my one time out of six or seven weeks that I could be at a meeting and I wanted to come and do it in person to say, you know, I, I can live with it either way, but it's going to seem like a big increase in our line item to say we have to keep a reserve for a minimum of one big claim a year, or one big scenario or three small scenarios or whatever it is.
And it's just like more to better understand the true cost of like, and be able to see it clearer, um, of each committee or department, like totally, not just legal, like it was just a total, like how much cost is associated.
I just want to add, I've never been a part of a meeting here that said they need to be getting their act together or anything of that kind of nature. And I think what Sean is saying is exactly, we, and it was a very brief discussion, but it was like, it seems like it makes sense because this isn't the selectman's money and it's not the planning board's money. It's the people's money. And so that they can see where their money's going and it wouldn't be too hard to track.
It's already tracked though. That's what I'm trying to figure out is it's already being tracked to three sub accounts under one master fund. So again, I'm, I'm, my question came up of why is there such a big deal being made? And again, I think knowing that we defend the town and we go to the attorney for what we need to to prevent lawsuits is, I, I don't care where we put it. I just care that it was, the implication was perceived as then you're spending too much money.
That wasn't part of the, any discussion I've been a part of.
No. Of like, if anything, the board's been, um, working to enhance, you know, the different committees or boards ability to access attorneys without having to go through the select board. Um, I don't feel like that's right, you know, because then this board should act as a barrier of sorts and really kind of, you know, steer things one way or another. Um, so that's why, you know, that, all of that's been taken away now, like where you don't have to make a phone call to Debbie or the town administrator to say, hey, I'd like to talk to attorney about this.
Well, and that's what, even with the budget under a general fund, that's the way it's been. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out now if we have a line item, I would like there, if, if you guys elect to go with individual line items and either way, it's probably a good idea for us to have a policy in place before that gets voted on or before we go to, to the deliberative session on how we actually go through the process. Because it should, you know, from my perspective is if we get in a big hairy lawsuit next year, how will we then, you know, is it, is there potential for, for either the ZBA or the planning board or the select board to say, hey, we've exceeded our money. Do you have to go back to the townspeople? You know, is there some big process or is it simply a validation of yes, the, the attorneys recommend we continue, therefore we continue?
Well, I guess that depends on what the degree of hairiness is and, and how far over it's going to go. So.
And I think that's where-
But I know that that comes down to, you know, in the budget process. What I'm hearing from you is that you feel like it's better to keep it all legal and broken out just to, uh, account, sub, like sub accounts?
Currently, the, my understanding is, and what we were told when we went to one big budget is if you need the attorney, use the attorney. You don't do it for fun, right? If you need the attorney and, and there's lawyers still in your meetings.
And you're encouraged to get your own attorney, right? The planning board attorney?
Right, right. We have our own attorney. Right. So I guess the, the question becomes, what is our actual process? You know, it is, is right now, it's if you need to use it, if we're going to set some kind of a cap or a potential cap, then we need to understand what the procedures are, are going to be. And right now, there's, I don't think we have any-
There's always been kind of like a, a cap, so to speak, um, on it. Like it, it doesn't matter whether or not it gets broken out one way or another. Here's, we do have that ability to, you know, shift money like from one legal budget to another legal budget.
I was going to add, our board is composed of elected members and so I think it's, this board obviously wants to stay as far away from that. Any kind of managing a committee or department, not department, any committee or elected officials that you have your job to do. And, you know, forming your budget is on the planning board. You know what I'm saying?
I, I do and I don't, right? So again, if, if, if I put in for fifteen thousand dollars knowing that's our average high year cost, right? And, and it goes to thirty, are you saying, well, I'm sorry, your budget is fifteen, have a nice, you know, deal with it somehow through a public attorney after that? Like, we don't have any processes.
No, because like right now, we had a twenty thousand dollar budget for legal and we're already over forty something. No, 'cause like, right now, we've had a twenty thousand dollar budget for legal and we're already over forty something.
Well, as a town, we are, right? And we have to then find that money.
Right.
And so that's my impression, but I don't know if that would change.
No.
Like, if the select board changes, is somebody going to interpret that differently because there isn't a policy or anything?
Oh, you can't say, it, it could, it could be interpreted differently.
Yeah.
You know, because in the past, um, the planning board, ZBA, um, were restricted, so to speak.
Right.
Access to attorneys.
Right.
You know, and that's not the case now. So it's, I understand what you're saying.
So I think if, depending on which road you tend to go, I would ask you to consider the implications if the board changes, if the select board changes, and how do we set a policy and procedure so that we... I know you don't like writing policies, nobody likes writing policies and procedures, somebody might in this room, you should take them up on it. But I think we need something to understand how it's going to work.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, yeah, point taken.
Yep.
Thank you, Dee.
Makes sense.
And where are the... So we have seven oh one, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding weight limits on River Road. In opening this discussion, I know there's a lot of opinions in the room right now, you know, a lot of strong minds one way or another. I, civility is paramount in this discussion. So I'd like you all to please address the board, the, the select board, and not to cross-talk and get snarky with each other, because at the end of the day, we're all community members and we live here, you know. You know, we live, work, and enjoy this community together. So you don't know where things are gonna go, you know, tomorrow, and you don't wanna cut off any potential friendships. So please, you know, just keep that community aspect in mind in your comments. Uh, so to give a little backstory to this, a couple of years ago, we lifted the weight restrictions on River Road, along with a handful of other roads in town. And it's now come back before us that some of the residents from River Road are looking to have that, uh, weight limit reinstated. So we heard from them, um, and this was an opportunity to get a greater idea and understanding from the greater community to come in and speak to how they utilize River Road and, uh, how the reinstating the old weight limits, like, how that would impact you all too. So with that, yes, sir?
Can, can you give us a rundown of what their reasons are for putting the weight limits on?
Um, well, there's safety issues, they feel, because of the speeding on the road, uh, the heavier trucks, you know, take longer to stop. There's a lot of increased traffic with all of the, the big trucks now. The road's narrow at some point and makes it, um, difficult for cars to get by uh, the bigger, you know, eighteen-wheelers that go up and down the road. Am I missing anything I don't?
Just, um, the kids that, that fish at the causeway.
Yeah.
And, um...
Track team?
Track team runs down River Road. We have the horse, um, horseback riders, we have people that walk, hike, jog. We have new moms now, walking the baby carriages. I mean, we have so many people on that road right now. And it's so thin and it's just really dangerous. And I just feel that it's just, it, there's going to be an accident. The trucks go way too fast, and I think they can be diverted to other, to other roads. I really do.
And then...
And I understand, no, I understand that there is business in town, the oil truck, people have to listen. Yes, that's accepted. It's these trucks that come through from all different towns that it's inconvenient for them.
Good, thank you. And then, at, before we make our comments, if you could, please state your, you know, first and last name.
Thank you.
And then if you're a resident of New Ipswich or not. So not being a resident of New Ipswich, won't restrict you from making a comment tonight, like, because you may conduct business in New Ipswich, and that's appreciated too. So Debbie, is that what you're...
That's what I was gonna ask, yes. Just because there's so many people.
Over here, ma'am.
Ian Baker, Bank Village. Um, I've lived in Bank Village over thirty years now, and obviously, traffic has increased on River Road. What concerns me is the number of large trucks, um, traveling down the road and sometimes not at a reasonable speed. People walk on the road, I used to walk on the road, I don't feel safe being on that road and leaving my home going towards Warwick Mills. That corner, I mean, even meeting another car is dicey sometimes, never mind a big truck. And I'm, another concern of mine, as I'm sitting on my terrace or my porch, is to see the number of trucks coming down Courier Road to get to River Road. I thought it was supposed to be a scenic road, or it was when I first moved here. Maybe not, maybe I'm misspeaking, maybe it has been changed. I didn't think the large trucks should be on Courier Road coming to River Road.
Sir?
Ben Hatcher, one fifty-nine Grevo Road. As someone that uses the road with big trucks, I go on a farm, I move hay bales down the road all the time. If I went around, it would cost me at least fifteen minutes east direction.
But that's allowed if you're, uh, if you live in...
No, sir, sir.
Then that's fine, right?
He's just, he's addressing Ben.
I'm just giving a point, right?
Ben.
Yep.
Please address us.
So it would cost me fifteen minutes at least in each direction. And I'm a farm, I can't imagine what it would cost, and I did the math real quick. If you had six employees on the other side of town that would use River Road daily, it would cost you an extra fifteen minutes each direction, thirty minutes a day, that's seventy-six thousand dollars a year for your seven employees to go all the way around. I, I don't feel as business owners or as a farm, I know I'm exempt, but I don't hold myself to that, that kind of rule. The road says posted, I'll go around, even though I know I'm exempt from it. I don't think that's fair for these business owners, which there are quite a bit of them here tonight. Uh, I don't think it's fair that these guys who paid for these roads to be paved have to now go around. And, and this is an unpopular view, but my truck paid a road tax, registration tax, all these other taxes that your bike and your, your shoes did not. My truck has more rights, in my feeling, and this is my personal opinion, than your car, than your, than your bike does. I'm sorry that it's inconvenience, but we have a right to use these roads. These are our town roads, and this is our town.
Sir?
David Copen, and I, I, I agree with what Ben just said one hundred percent. I think more that the issue is here is if, if they don't want big trucks on their road, then I want horse and buggy on my road.
Right.
Really, I'm, no, I'm being serious.
Yeah.
Where, where does the cannon worm stop? It, we have, we have every right to drive down River Road. Well, I don't have a big truck, but, um, I, I don't see why we would stop that. Uh, uh, somebody with a CDL has far more to lose than somebody in a car. I can drive down there in my pickup truck and get a speeding ticket, I can get many speeding tickets. My insurance might go up a little bit, I might pay a fifty or a hundred dollar fine, I don't know if I have a speeding ticket, but that's no big deal. Ben, he has a CDL license, and he gets stopped speeding on that road like sixty miles an hour or something? I don't know for sure, but I think that affects his CDL license far more.
For sure.
Uh, not only that, but a CDL driver, um, takes, has far more, uh, training than, than just an average person getting a driver's license. But I think the big thing is, is if, if this, uh, the people there, they have a concern, but we put, we put restrictions on that, then I'll be back next week and I will try to put horse and buggy on my road.
How many big truck accidents happened?
No, exactly, how many big trucks accidents? I, I, ma'am?
Uh, I, we have, we're on River, Karen Hackett, River Road. We have a farm there too, and we have a daughter and we have a couple horses. And we moved there for that particular reason, to have a farm, uh, one of them all my life. And most of the, most of the drivers when we're riding our horses are polite and slow down. Some of the really large trucks, they shake and rattle, and it is scary. I've got right now a three-year-old horse, that's not your problem, but, you know, they're, they're, they get a little jittery with that, and it's, it's scary. And a lot of times, I wish I could have let my daughter ride down the road to meet her friend with a horse, and it, it doesn't seem safe with, with the large trucks. The other thing we noticed is, we were so thrilled when the town paved the roads, and it wasn't very long after that the sides start crumbling, and I'm sure that's due to some of the large trucks. I'm not saying the drivers would do that intentionally, but there are places when, you have to go out when you pass, you know, somebody, a bigger vehicle like that, we have, we take the horse trailer around too. And so it did seem a shame after we finally got the nice roads that, that some of them are crumbling in areas, because we go up and down there a lot. You know, we've, just for the kids and stuff that might be their grandkids, you know, um, it is a concern. I understand their side of it as well. I don't know what a good answer is, but it seems like residential areas in some towns are twenty-five miles an hour, I don't know. The enforcement has not been good at all. We've talked to police, offered them to use our extra place there, it's kind of hidden, to put, you know, some speed checks in because some of the teenage drivers in cars drive way too fast too. It's not just, um, and, you know, like I say, most of the trucks don't, but it does, it only takes one truck to cause a horse to rear or fall off the side or, or a child or a teenager jogging, whatever. So I, I sympathize with both sides, but, um, it's, it's a very rural, small community, so I would like something to be done, even if it's speeding up or, or, you know, eliminating the huge trucks, you know? I mean, there's school buses too, so that's just our experience with it. Like I say, most are very polite, slow down for us, and we appreciate that. But it, there's always a couple going too fast or not being careful or don't pull over around or things like that.
Thank you. Sir?
Oh, yeah, my name, uh, Phillip there, two ninety-three Main Street. And, um, just wanna say I hear, you know, all the comments about people, um, you know, moving into town and, the town has changed. I've been here my whole life. And I've seen from what it was thirty, forty years ago, you know, this really common working town to more of a, more of a home, homestead town. But there's still is a big base of construction workers here and a lot of people that, you know, use trucks to make a living. We, we don't drive these trucks to irritate the homesteading people in town. We drive these trucks because we need to make a living. And the general court of New Hampshire kind of leans that way. I'll give you guys a copy on what trucks do. There's an RSA in there. Yeah, and it pertains to the, you know, commerce and the movement of natural products, unprocessed products, i.e. gravel, timber, things of stone, things of that nature. And what we really need to, to get to here is the, you know, the laws of New Hampshire on roads and how they can be limited and how they can be restricted. And so there's that RSA one ninety and one ninety-one, and they will, they will show that a lot of judgment has to go in and consideration to show why a road should be restricted. So a, a road agent would have to say that the road isn't constructed in accordance to carry the weight of vehicles that are registered for certain weights. And then you guys would have to make a decision on that. And then any business in town that would be restricted by that law can write a letter to the selectmen, and you have fifteen days to respond to that letter. And if you don't, then that business can carry through for the rest of the year or until that meeting happens. So there's, there's a lot of laws that protect trucking because it's so, the economy is so hinged on, on the movement of these products in the state of New Hampshire. So it's not just a matter of opinions. If this thing ended up in court and the court finds that it's gonna cause harm to businesses and the economy, it's probably gonna land in the favor of the guys that drive trucks. And again, they're not trying to harass anybody. If a truck is going fast down River Road and he's going double the speed limit and he's got a CDL and someone gets killed, it's not, it's not a violation, it's manslaughter. And most guys that drive a truck, if you're seriously overweight, I know of a logging truck, if you're twenty thousand pounds overweight and you hit somebody, you're, you're looking at manslaughter. So it's not, it's not a, you know, most guys pay attention.
Thank you. Someone in the back?
Kevin McDonald, thirty-seven Westbrook Drive. It just sounds like, just sounds like one of those things where people, because again, when you talk about safety, you kind of have to back it up with statistics, so I don't have them readily available, but I know that just my own involvement of going up and down Westbrook Drive, I've seen multiple motor vehicle accidents down there. There are always passenger cars. So, I mean, I guess first off is, has, if there was a problem with multiple truck accidents down there, speeding, then I could see somebody looking at a situation, saying, how do we resolve this, it's gonna come to a tragedy? But we need to say, if you live on a road and there's a consistent problem with speeding trucks, then that's why we have a police department.
Exactly.
Reach out to your police department and they can go and force that road. Because at the end of the day, somebody in this town lives on another road somewhere. So every road, you're gonna have people that wanna ride a horse down. Every road, somebody wants to take a walk on. I have a ten-year-old daughter, I walk a pageant road. I couldn't tell you how many cars go by me that I have to tan my daughter off on the road because they're doing seventy-five miles an hour. If I have an issue, I call the police and say the speeding. And again, like everybody has kind of expressed here with truck driving, I mean, there's serious implications to, to operating that truck outside of the law. So, I mean, people are risking their CDL. I travel River Road every single day. I don't have a big truck, I have a small intermediate truck, service truck. So it's not a dump truck, it's not a truck that's going to be going down there vibrating roads or scaring horses. But with that said, I've driven up and down that road every day, I couldn't tell you how many times. And I haven't even, I don't recall passing a dump truck on that road, a big truck. But again, between oil trucks, delivery trucks, school buses, they're all large vehicles. At the end of the day, they, they need to be able to use all of these roads, they just need to use them in an appropriate manner. So if they're speeding or they're driving, the neighbors or the people that have these complaints should be trying to get their plate numbers and just have the police posted down there. Because again, you can't say, listen, these are the things we enjoy on this road and we can't enjoy them because we're worried about trucking, because then you're saying, I want them to use another road and reroute. So you're on, so basically what you're saying is, let them go down and disturb someone else. At the end of the day, you have to drive on these roads with these trucks. Somebody's road's gotta get driven on. And again, River Road is actually large and wider than most roads in town, so where do you reroute them to? A less desirable and more dangerous road? And again, if somebody had statistics to say, hey, listen, this is getting crazy, there's been thirteen truck accidents on this road in the last year? Does anybody even recall if there's been a big truck involved in a motor vehicle accident on that road? Because I can't recall one.
Or a speeding ticket?
Or even a speeding ticket. And I haven't seen a police cruiser running radar, radar down there in at least five or six years. I've never seen a police cruiser on that road, a past one, but I haven't seen one running radar. So if there's a problem going on down there, why is the police department not being contacted by the residents of the road to at least try that as a first, a first attempt to fix the problem, you know? Because again, you, you have to drive on somebody's road.
A state highway road.
And I would just like to follow up one quickly too. Most of the people that are here tonight that have small businesses and have trucks, you gotta remember too, that when the two thousand and eight ice storm happened, they were with all the same people that were right here at the EOC, and they took all their equipment and machines and trucks to clean this entire town on, over a two-week period where people couldn't get in and out of their homes. So everybody in this town came up here and worked together as a community to fix all of that. So again, just to kind of reiterate what Phil said, I mean, nobody's out there trying to do anything on purpose, I think it's just, if you have big trucks, you have to move them around and they, they can be loud and they are big. But if somebody's speeding or breaking the law, then that should be dealt with in a, you know, person-to-person or vehicle-to-vehicle situation. Which is my own feeling.
Ma'am?
Julie Copen of New Ipswich. Um, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, um, to what these ladies said about the traffic going on their road. Um, we're on a road that is not a through, through road. And the big trucks rattling, the pavement getting, I mean, all, all of the complaints are the same complaints... all of the complaints are the same complaints that I also have, I mean, noticed through our, our, we, we raised nine children on our road. All the same things that you've noticed. And I'm not willing to go to horse and buggy because I'm like, I'm hard in and out of my yard. But, um, so I just wanted to make a note on those two things.
Louise?
Well, no, I was just saying, we had a weight limit sign on our road. Now it's gone. We would like it to come back. We, you know, he said it's going to take him 15 more minutes to maybe go down the state highway, which would be Ashby Road to Davis Village Road to get out to Turnpike. Well, can you put a price on human life?
What about the humans on Davis Village Road? Sorry, sorry. No, no, please, don't. Okay.
We had a weight limit sign. There was reason for that.
Thank you.
David Copeland. So you said that you had a horse and trailer and stuff like that. The, the weight limit that was on there before, you pretty much can't drive your truck, truck and trailer down the road.
No, that's, he knows the weight.
No, you don't exceed 12,000 pounds? You don't? How much does your horse weigh?
1,000.
An ounce of pounds?
And again, Dave.
No, no, I just, I was just a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I do have one more thing to add. He talked about policing it, which is a very good idea. That's where you've got to start. But I, I will, I will say this, and this did happen. I don't know, probably too many of those, Chief Rodley that was in town for many years. He was the chief here. So there was a construction company up on Page, uh, over towards, oh, it was up top of, uh, Pratt Pond Road. And there was people on North Road that were complaining about their vans driving too fast and they wanted to do all kinds of stuff, too. So Rodley went and started, uh, running radar there. The lady that complained the most got the first ticket. So when you guys want the chief over there or the police department, no, I'm just, okay, I'm sorry. If, if you want to put the police there monitoring this road, just be ready.
Thank you. Do I see, sir?
Yeah, Kenny Letnan, Westbrook Drive. I'm pretty sure there's case law out there and I can try to find it and present it to you guys, but, um, limiting the town's power on posting weight limits on roads, I think it might be a fairly new case law. So the town attorney is probably going to want to look into that, but I can find it myself and try to turn it in. Limiting the town's power on, on, um, yeah, on posting the road. So that's going to be a big thing is I don't even think it's legal, first of all, to post the weight limit on the road. And then, second of all, common sense, if somebody's got to go 15 minutes around.
It's not 15.
Please.
10 to, 10 to 15 minutes further around, how many more residents are they impacting with that longer go-around versus going straight through the access? So is the, is the people's livelihood and homes less valuable in that particular stretch than it is on the, the cut across? This doesn't make sense to me that you'd, you know, impact that many more people and travel that much further with a big truck just to, you know, make it so that somebody can walk or ride a horse, you know, unaffected, so.
Thank you. That's on the, in the back?
Yeah, Carson Copeland of, uh, New Ipswich. If the road was posted and then the sign was taken down, what was the reason for it being taken down? Did that mean that the big trucks were allowed to drive on it then again?
That was exactly why I had my hand up. When we made the decision to take down the weight limits, we first consulted with the DPW director and asked if he felt, because the road was in, it was in really rough shape previously. And then, when it was redone, they, they fortified this upgrade. And so we asked them, the DPW director, if it would hold up to truck traffic. And he felt like it would. And now when this complaint came to us a few weeks ago, we went out and we looked, well, I went and looked at the road. He went to DPW director, the current one, and he agreed with the previous one, that the road can handle the truck traffic.
So with that being said, and that law being in place, would that be case closed?
There's a, there is in the RSA. Now, I'm not sure about the case law that Mr. Letnan's referring to, but in the RSA, there's two reasons, two reasons you can impose a weight limit that I'm aware of. One is it's costing the town too much money in maintaining that road. The other is safety. This, um, which Mr. Thayer gave us was a court ruling, I believe. This one says, well, it ends with the court, "The general court urges municipalities to exercise its authority in ways that do not unreasonably infringe on the efficient movement of unprocessed natural resources, manufactured goods, or other commercial products." So there's a warning.
All right, go, like, trying to capture some other people that haven't spoken. Ma'am?
I just have a quick statement. I'm Jennifer Worth, 248 Turnpike Road. I live, um, right around the corner from River Road. Um, I've only lived in town four years, but Banky and Bank Village is beautiful. So I have always chosen to walk to River Road and back. Um, my son is four years old. He was born in New Ipswich, and I am one of those walkers with a stroller. I will say that I find in my experiences, the people that stop to make sure another car, that they could, like, it's the truckers. They, they'll stop behind me, make sure, if there's somebody in the other lane and they, but if they can, I find that they're the ones that are always take the whole other lane and give me the space to walk. It's the two-axle little cars that are the ones that always speed by me. And I will agree that that turn towards the end of Turnpike Road is dangerous. As a walker, you can't, like, you know, you're supposed to walk towards traffic, but I always choose to walk on the other side because then you can at least see cars coming. So I, I'm not saying that there aren't issues, but I don't find as a walker, the issue's being the trucker.
Yeah. Sir?
Jim Hicks, River Road. I talked to the three of you, so you, you know pretty much what my thoughts are on the, and I just wanted to add a couple of things. I mean, we need to work with these guys. These guys built this town. All these businesses, there's no two ways about it. All contributed to making this town what it is. And when we had the ice storm and I was emergency management director, these guys came over and, what can we do? You know, there was no idea. But they could get out of their neighborhood. They came to help. One of the big problems I see down there is the tractor-trailer trucks coming up down from Ashbeham Road with Massachusetts plates, and they fly down the road. And it's the out of state is the, you know, it's funny, and I guess at times I've been probably guilty of the same thing. When you're in your own neighborhood, you kind of take care, a little bit care, you know, Joe, you know, whatever. So, and then you get into the other neighborhoods and you're not quite maybe as conscious of what you're doing. But the reality is, is those are the trucks that really scare me. And as far as the road goes, I'm seeing cracks there. I've been there for a long time. I, when I first moved down on River Road, I used to get my cow realigned twice a year. They used to laugh at me at the night shop. So I see the crack. I can see the beginning of what happened before. So I don't know how they fortified it, but I'm, it's going to be interesting to see depending upon what kind of winter we have, um, what the cracks are going to be like because they'll open up. And I do feel that to save the issue with the kids, um, and I know people, they know they, they get on 124. It's like, yeah, well, 124 is a lot bigger than River Road. And that corner is an accident waiting to happen. I mean, something should be done about that. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Wendy Letnan. A little solid chiefess, I mean. I can tell you there has no, if not been in a lot of times that I've been on the ambulance, any major accidents on that River Road to do with a truck. I also know that, in my opinion, the kids, if you're saying kids not safe on River Road, that are running, um, track cross-country, they're definitely not on Turnpike Road. That road's narrower. People fly down it. So what's, what's the answer? You take the kids and you tell them they can't run the road?
Or the track.
I mean, why are the track, right, run a track? Well, they should be. Why are these truckers going to be punished for this inconvenience? You know, they, they are the problem. Accident, yes, accident happened on River Road, 100%, I've been for most of them. Um, it's the cars. It's not these truck drivers.
Thank you. Uh, sir?
Local truckers are really not that concerned on River Road as much as the food truckers that come through from Massachusetts. And, uh, the, the sand trucks that come and pick up, uh, dirt and sand from Ashby, Ashbeham Road and bring it out of town. So it's, um, it's really not the local truckers that we're concerned about. It's the food truckers that we're more, more concerned about.
Here in Nysley Appleton Road. So is it possible to post a road just to people from Massachusetts? And if you do put a weight limit on the road, I'm assuming that the fire agents can still go there.
Yes.
And the plow trucks?
Mm-hmm.
And the school buses?
Yep.
And the firewood delivery guys?
Yep.
So why don't we try to post it and just put a sign for the two trucks that can't go down there from Massachusetts? But the guys from New Hampshire can still truck down there with their dirt, especially if it's going to a house on River Road. Because all the houses, whether it's 100 years old or two days old, have had dirt and asphalt and lumber. Every single thing that's been brought to every house on every road in town has been brought there with a truck. So I don't, how do you post a road for two types of trucks but the other 150 trucks that's still weigh the same, that's still going to crack the asphalt, the asphalt that my taxes paid to be put down, that I vote for every year to keep the road nice? I, we, I paid for that so that we can use the roads just like everybody else that owns a big truck and pays a heavy highway use tax. It's actually quite a bit more than a regular car tax for the reason of it being so heavy. That's why it's called a heavy highway use tax. I mean, it seems like the problem's already been kind of taken care of. If you've got speeders, you've got a cop. If the road gets beat up, you have townspeople that pay to fix them. That's what we're here for, apparently. And they pay extra taxes. The diesel costs more money. That funds the Department of Transportation for small plowing. It's just confusing to me why I have to have horses on my road shitting in my road where my kids walk, but a truck can't drive down someone else's road. I don't want a horse and buggy either. I don't even like bicycles because they're, you know, I'm not going to get run over by one, but, you know, when I have to cross a double solid to go around a bicycle, it could get dangerous. And I don't know the statistics. I'm sure there's been people in accidents from bicycles or wildlife. There's accidents every day. That's why they're called accidents. Most of them are preventable, and that's why we have laws and rules. The trucks get inspected twice as, as much as a car. The guys driving them have to go to a doctor to get a special physical. I have to be physically examined by a doctor to drive a truck with a CDL?
We know.
Okay, well, you know, when I drive down the road, it's not just in some guy drinking a few beers, swerving the whole place going 90. I'm paying attention. I've got five kids to go home to. I've got bills to pay. We all know what the taxes are to pay for the new roads and the school buses and the plow trucks. So it sucks to have cars or trucks speeding on your road, you know? I, I guess the only way to get away from that would be go live off grid somewhere where they don't have cars. But you, people live in towns that have cars and trucks. I mean, it's kind of what it is. I mean, people live on the state highway road, and I don't have, I haven't measured the roads, but River Road's probably just about as wide as 123A, probably even wider in some places. So, I, that's, that's my piece.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, hi. Colin Carroll. I live on Sixth Joy Lane. My house fronts on River Road. Um, it's an historic home. It has, um, rubblestone foundation. Uh, let me give you a free piece of legal advice. You cannot restrict weights based on what state you're coming from or what registration you have on your truck. That would indeed be a, um, a violation of the commerce clause. Um, this town does have the clear statutory authority to establish weight limits on roads such as River Road. And as many people have already stated, there's reasons for that, to prevent the unreasonable damage or extraordinary municipal maintenance expenses, um, based on wear and tear from such trucks on these roads. Um, other people have noted, and I will restate, that River Road contains numerous culverts and causeways that traverse the, uh, South Heagan River and go over Lawdland Pond. Um, this board was presented with, I believe, expert testimony at one of the last hearings that showed that this heavy truck traffic is detrimental to these pieces of public infrastructure, the maintenance of which would likely be substantial if damaged from heightened heavy truck traffic. River Road also passes through Bank Village, historic Village District 1, where a large majority of these homes, uh, sit on rubblestone foundations, some of which, including my own, uh, and my neighbors, are less than 10 yards from the edge of the roadway. Studies have shown that damage to historic stone foundations is observed when walls have been affected by close proximity of road traffic, particularly from heavy freight vehicles. Ground-worn vibration from these heavy vehicles is transmitted through the foundation, in-filled material, and is likely potentially to cause damage to these historic properties. Happy to give you the study citation if you want. Um, beyond the, the two kind of, uh, reasons I mentioned around, um, damage to roads and municipal maintenance expense, uh, the statute also allows, um, reasons for, uh, public safety for also restricting weights on roads. And that also has been upheld recently, as recently as 2016 by the New Hampshire Supreme Court. Again, happy to give you that citation if you'd like. I'm unaware of any case site or case law that says that a municipal town or city is not allowed to impose, uh, weight restrictions on its own roads that are universally applied and, uh, are not selective based on, you know, where you live, what kind of truck you drive, et cetera. Um, and for those reasons, you know, imposing weight restrictions on town roads does not violate the equal protection or the commerce clause of the New Hampshire or U.S. Constitution. I guarantee you that. Um, the equal protection clause of both constitutions requires that a state governed impartially, general rules must apply even-handedly to all persons within the jurisdiction. Thus, clauses forbidding the legislature from imposing upon an individual burdens or liabilities that are not cast upon similarly situated individuals. A weight restriction on, on a road applies to everybody. It applies whether you're driving a truck from Massachusetts, whether you're driving a truck from New Ipswich, whether you're driving a truck from Temple, whatever. That is the power that this board has to set weight limits on their roads. And I suspect that's why a weight limit existed on River Road to begin with.
In 2014.
Yes, for my, many, many years until it was lifted in 2021, which leads me to my next point. The statute that allows you to set these limits on the road also provides a remedy for individual hardships. Um, the proper remedy for the select board, um, if warranted by application, should be to grant individuals, whether it's by company, by tab, whatever, um, allowable kind of waivers that allow them to traverse River Road for very specific purposes in their vehicles. You don't just broadly get, get rid of a law that affects everybody and then allows these large trucks that you're talking about from Massachusetts, from other towns, whatever, to do, um, more damage to a local road than local taxpayers, myself included, who pays, you know, I have, I have vehicles. I pay taxes on those vehicles. I own a home on River Road. I pay a substantial amount of property tax on that home on River Road. So do I want to be having my taxes go to prepare, uh, repair roads and culverts and things like that that are being damaged by people from out of state? Use the waiver provision that you have in your statute. It's there for your use. Make use of it. Don't, you know, don't kill a bug with a hamper. Be more precise. If you have a problem, use something that is more appropriate, more tailored, more precise. Um, for all those reasons, I just respectfully ask that you reinstate the, the restrictions on the road that existed for years. Um, there is a workaround for this. We can make it work. There is the potential for, you know, safety hazards, damaged fields, homes, damage to public infrastructure that taxpayers in New Ipswich will have to pay for. Thank you.
So using that waiver, would you have to have every person in New Ipswich who drives a truck get a waiver?
Well, I don't wanna go down.
I'm just asking, is that how it works? So then that would kind of limit people from Massachusetts?
If you have a six ton, if you, let's say, I mean, what was the weight limit before? Was it six tons? So it was 12,000 pounds?
Seven pounds.
Six tons?
Anyway, let's say six tons, 12,000 pounds, just for example. Yes, if you're regularly traversing that road in a vehicle that weighed, you know, a gross vehicle weighed more than that amount, you would probably then have to, you know, apply for the waiver with the town in order to not be subject to being stopped by, you know, the police.
These people get permission from the highway department.
Yes, it's a fairly straightforward process according to the statute. I encourage you to read your own enabling statute to figure out what process it requires. It doesn't appear to be much, but I am not your legal counsel.
Yeah, no, I have, and I've been issuing waivers for the world rate limits.
But it exists.
Yeah.
Use it.
Sir?
I would just like to follow up on that because, again, this reminds me of a story one time in another town I was involved with, they wanted to stop building houses, so they had a big group of people who up there kind of sell on the people why they didn't want houses built anymore. But an old timer that was ninety-six years old that had thirty acres there, paid plenty of taxes, got up and said, listen, I agree with you, the town's not gonna look like it used to look, but guess what? Your kids all got to grow up, have families and build houses here, and now that your family's all got a house and you got a house, you wanna stop everybody else, the young people, when their kids get older, they can't build houses here anymore. So what this sounds like to me is, again, I already said this, you have to drive on some road. So if you open that door of, hey, listen, a truck or, or a certain weight limit's gonna prevent a road from having premature damage to it, that's every single road in this town. So guess what? We all pay taxes to have these roads done. That means every person that lives on every road in this town could say, we don't want the trucks on our road either. That means nobody can drive on the roads. At the end of the day, roads wear out, they have a certain life on them, and it doesn't always necessarily matter, I mean, obviously, a heavy traffic with heavy trucks will make that life cycle of that road shorter, but that's why they pay all the taxes they do for those trucks registrations. And all of us for, as, as living in this town, every road's gonna have trucks driving on it. So if it's not River Road, I live off of Page Hill, so can I sit there and say I don't want a truck on Page Hill 'cause I'm gonna have potholes on my road? I mean, if there's sensitive infrastructure on River Road and over a long period of time it gets damaged, I guess it's the responsibility of the town and the taxpayers to fix that, you know what I mean? But it's like, I, I don't know how you can, and I understand that there's some obviously legitimate concerns about things that are happening down there. But again, towns, I believe, also, just like the state, reserve rights and rules and regulations that can limit the access of people walking on certain roads and horses being on certain roads. Because you see signs all the time that says, no, no pedestrians on this road. So again, do you start sitting there saying where people can walk, where horses can go, where our kids should play, we don't want trucks on this road? It, it just seems like, if, if somebody presented a problem, like I said, that it was like seri, like you said, that that RSA responds to, that, that there's a safety problem and that can be substantiated here at this meeting, and you say, hey, this is something we have to really look at, someone's gonna end up dying down there or getting hurt. We don't have any statistics of the people that don't want trucks on that road, they're not coming forward, they're just saying, hey, it's not safe, we don't feel safe, they don't have anything to back that up. So, again, I don't find that, I don't find that there's a safety problem, because if there was, there'd be accidents down there, there'd be things happening down there that we could at least substantiate that it's been dangerous down there. So if that boils down to it's just cracking the road, all the roads in town crack from truck traffic and vehicle traffic over time. So I mean, I don't know how you get around that, because you can't have a certain group of people say, I don't want trucks on my road, let them go wreck that guy's road or this person's road. I mean, it's very complicated, you can't, you know, I don't know how you fix that.
No, thank you. Sir?
So Mike Kane, New Ipswich, um, a couple things that I kind of questions about it. Is, you know, I guess first off is, you know, I won't beat a dead horse, but as far as the speeding thing, uh, you know, a- again, we're trying to correct a, you know, a violation of a law that currently exists by adding another law or rule and restriction, uh, which brings me to the next question, is how is that weight restriction going to be enforced? And, you know, is a big truck driving down the road, is it gonna get stopped and questioned every time the truck goes down the road, or do they get followed until they see where their destination is? I mean, how, i- is it gonna be the, the residents that Collins said a truck drove by, here's a license plate? I mean, we don't know what the business of that truck or that operator were, where they were going. So I mean, what kind of enforcement, you know, is involved with something like this? Is there?
Then, yeah, this town doesn't even have scales, does it?
We don't have cops at night.
Well, no, but it would hardly be.
All right, hold on, guys. Yeah.
But, yeah, go ahead.
I haven't been a part of that enforcement structure, 'cause it was, you know, within, just after my first year of being on the board that, um, you know, we chose to lift those restrictions, so, um, yeah, there is that waiver process, I've heard of that as well, and it's just as simple as making a phone call and if, I don't, Peter didn't say about restricting anybody ever, uh, maybe, you know, seasonally, it may have happened, um, but I'm not sure.
So, you know, just gonna go back to the, the second part, you know, is, okay, you know, we do have all these other vehicles traveling on that road that do have a business purpose on that road, you know, they are larger trucks, they are going to be up and down that road, we are gonna have wear and tear on that road, uh, you know, and you start talking about other, you know, residents being, or, you know, buildings or structures being impacted, you know, by, you know, heavy vehicle traffic. It's gonna happen, you know, and who's the one to, to say that, okay, well, it was because these trucks were driving by and, you know, just because the fire truck, well, just because a need go by, didn't play effect into it, uh, you know, and it, it's just, yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, but not to skip over you, I just wanna try to capture everybody that wants to speak that hasn't spoken already. Is there anyone? Sir?
Graham Hagy, Davis Village Road. I got five kids as well, they, I live ten feet off the road, I have a stone foundation, I know a lot of good foundation companies in this room, if you need some help with that, but why should they all have to go and cross my road instead of other said road? I don't understand.
So I make another call, is there anybody that's out in the hallway that wishes to speak that doesn't have access to the room?
I just wanna ask a question, have you had a chance to?
Could you just state your name for the record?
My name is Richard Smith, I live on 124 River Road. I was wondering if you gentlemen had a chance to read Sharon's letter that she addressed all your questions in?
Yes.
You have? Okay, so then there's no need for me to repeat that. I will say, I don't want, do wanna make a correction, though. Uh, in a statement I made two weeks ago, I said seventeen vehicles, it was thirty-four, and that was just one day. Okay? So it's a lot of traffic.
Ben? Does anybody mind just to check and see if anybody out in the hall?
Maybe they could all come in.
Yeah, maybe we can.
Come on in. Sir? Uh, Ruben, he's on the road. Come on in. Uh, just hold on, one moment. I gotta, like I said, I just wanna capture, you, you've spoken already once, I'll come back to you.
I know a lot of people in the front room, too.
Is there?
Yeah, it's like full in the lobby.
Can you tell them all?
Go ahead.
Yeah, tell them to come on in. This is a town meeting.
Uh, just a couple things, is, one is if you, um, if you put a weight limit on River Road, and then instead of dispersing all the trucks kind of, you know, between River Road and Main Street and going up through Dark Lane and stuff, you're gonna be pushing all those on, on, on that road. And another thing is, is your, um, a lot of your landscaping trucks, one ton trucks with trailers, they're gonna be going over about twelve thousand pounds. So, and that's a pretty low truck, that's not a, non-CDL.
Amazon Prime.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just, I know you guys, you weren't in here when I kinda, you know, asked verbally just to.
David, come on in.
I gotcha.
Amazon Prime. They ain't gonna make it down either, they're over twelve thousand pounds.
Yes, they do, because...
Well, yeah, but they're over twelve thousand pounds, so they should, they should also be allowed.
Dave, Dave, please, like, address the board, Louise, Saintthing, um, anybody else that just came, sir, in the back?
Harley Copen in Willard Road, responding to the culverts and road damage and upkeep. Every road in New Ipswich has culverts and paved roads, other than the dirt ones, of course, but it's a, that's a maintenance thing, that's not a fixing it by redirecting trucks. Um, and sure, it's like, it's like, uh, people don't like speeders by their house, but they'll speed by somebody else's house, I mean, that's just a common sense thing. Roads are gonna be, they'll get, over time, they break down and we'll repair them and keep fixing them and moving on. Uh, I don't think it's a wise decision to repost the road that was already inspected by the, um, head department of the road, road agent.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Tom LeWick on the Web Switch, I'll turn back to him. I'm a little concerned, only because it seems to be a precedent-setting thing, if you, and let me back up a little bit, because you talked about, I think the select, the select board did a, did the right thing when they, when the road was rebuilt and had the experts state whether it could handle, take the load limits off, so, I, I, I drove on River Road, it's no worse than, uh, any other road in New Ipswich. I mean, all, all roads take some wear and tear and, and need to be rebuilt from time to time, and I pay my taxes and I wanna be able to use all of the roads in town. Um, I'm not a truck driver, but if I was in the trucking business, I'd wanna be able to use all the towns and roads, roads in town. And if, I can see in the springtime, during the, during the spring, you, you temporarily put load limits on roads, and I know that happens all over to protect the roads, and that protects all of us citizens. But I, I don't see any reason why we should, because there's a group of people that happen to live on the road say, not on my road. Everybody could say that, and that's been repeated over and over here. We could all say that in every town road in town, like, well, you don't, you don't let them on River Road, so I don't want them on Temple Road, I don't want them on this road, I'm, and where does it stop? So I don't, I don't agree with posting River Road, I think it should remain the way it is.
Sir?
I just had a quick question, I, don't the houses...
Ryan, just, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, uh, Brian Tomro. Ashby Road, I'm on a state road. Don't the houses that are built in the seventeen and eighteen hundreds that have stone foundations and have no cars, you know, way up in the boonies, don't they have cracks in them, or has that been checked out also?
Is there anybody that just came into the room that would like to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Sir?
Jim Herney, River Road. I'm kinda lost in some of the message here, and it's, it's safety, and I think for many of us, and like I said, I do live on River Road, it's the safety, it's not, it's not the people following the law. Um, you know, Ben had spoken earlier, I see him drive by with his handrails, I couldn't be any happier or feel safer with my two-year-old, seeing him go by at the speed he goes by. It's the excessive speed by the incredible number of others. Uh, when you couple that with a narrow road, um, yes, no accidents have happened, I heard someone say, statistics, statistics, I, I don't think we wanna be having a meeting about my two-year-old was killed, okay? And I have to carry that two-year-old really close to the road, yes, I chose to buy that house, close to the road, but, um, I won't even let him hold my hand and walk anywhere near the road, it's just, it's just dangerous, there needs to be some sort of control, I'm not gonna apologize for the safety of my two-year-old. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, like I said, to me, it boils down to, I agree that, you know, business needs to occur, but some sort of checks need to be done, it's just, it's downright dangerous.
Thank you. Uh, just behind you. Sir?
Dan Craft, 313 Temple Road. Um, I think with all the things that have been said about, you know, the deterioration of the roads, and then obviously with the guys getting the experts involved and, and looking at it and giving the, the green light to all that, I mean, I feel like that's, it's kind of a new point, I mean, uh, we have the people that know what they're doing, looking at it and giving you the green light for big truck traffic on that road. And then with all of the safety, um, why are we, like the gentleman said, you know, trying to squash a bug with a hammer? Like, why aren't we just calling the police and having them go down there and set up and get some of these bad apples? I mean, I go in this town all the time, I drive around all over the place in my pickup truck, and I see all these guys with big trucks, and I, all these local guys, I've never yet to see anybody in this, in any of these companies ever not pull way over to the side, I've walked down the road, I ride my e-bike down the road, and I've never seen them where they haven't pulled way over to the side to give me room, to slow down, do whatever they possibly can to make me feel safer, if I'm with my kids, I got seven kids, they're always doing whatever it would make me feel the safest, and I see that with other people, too. So why are we even having this conversation? I mean, it's obviously not even the people that are here locally that are doing this type of activity, you know what I mean? It's the people from Mass, you know, I mean, if you guys don't want mass dirt, okay, well then let's get rid of them, if they're, they're the ones who are speeding, if they're the ones who are, you know, constantly causing a problem, let's go after them then, you know? Why are we hounding these guys? You know, or any of us, you know, I mean, I own, not big trucks, but they're big enough where they, where a weight restriction would, would prohibit me from going down that road with my trailer. So, I mean, why are we going after all of us local people when we know, when I've heard many tole, many times through this meeting that, oh, it's the out-of-staters, it's the mass guys, you know, and you said, you know, obviously, how do we? Yeah, well, then let's go after them, let's get the police involved, let's get down there, and let's figure out who the real people that are making people feel unsafe are, you know, 'cause there's obviously people, there's bad apples out there, but I can guarantee you, it probably, it'll probably be me, that will get stopped and pulled over and get a ticket the first time on River Road, but I'm willing to take that risk, you know? I think that's what we should do first, is get some police down there, get some people taking radar and figure out who these bad actors are, and then, then we'll go from there, you know, without restricting everybody.
Thank you. And just behind you, dude, he's been waiting a while. Yes, sir?
Stan David, 81 River Road. Um, the, the real issue is, River Road is the exception to all other roads, because it's, the causeway is the headwaters of the South Heagan River. And, um, the deterioration of the, trucks going over that constantly, it's the owners of the town to maintain the causeway. I don't want my tax-paying dollars going to pay for out-of-staters coming here and destroying their, their causeway. Uh, the causeway makes River Road the exception to the roads. That's my statement.
Thank you.
I'm, judging by everything I've heard, it sounds like the speeding is more the issue than the weight.
It's the large cost.
And everyone's said it, but if they go slower and go a speed limit, then maybe they wouldn't be as bad. That's, to me, that's what it sounds like the issue, it's not the weight.
We have seventeen trucks an hour.
Louise, hold on. Sir?
Yes. Um, so I was doing a delivery with my big giant evil speeding truck. My truck driver was going twenty-one miles an hour. What's the speed limit on the road there?
Thirty.
Thirty. He's going twenty-one, being cautious, I run trucks every day in this town, and I do everything I can to be courteous to people, slow way down, I don't wanna start problems. When someone flies out and tells them to slow the F down on my road, I have a problem with that, 'cause all of a sudden you're shooting radar with your eyes? Like, it's twenty-one miles an hour, I understand the truck's big and scary, but we go super slow, and they make a lot of noise when you hit a bump. It just, I, I don't, I don't like that, that makes me pretty crabby when people are singling me out, we do everything we can to stay on the right side. I've lived in this town my entire life, and I, I don't wanna jeopardize what I do, I try to appease everybody. So then my name ends up in the paper, like I'm the cause of all of this, and all I'm trying to do is like, hey, I'm getting stopped on my road because there's a posted sign on it that went up fifteen years ago because they repaved the road and they put the signs up so the thru trucks didn't go on the town roads when they did high bridge. And I was getting harassed by the police, so we said, go to the selectmen. So I went to the selectmen and we had a meeting, and the road agent said the roads are fine. And when those signs went up, I came to the town and said, what? And when those signs went up, I came to the town and said, "What are these signs about?" And they're like, "Oh, it's just for, through trucks, no local traffic's gonna get harassed." And all of a sudden, they're telling me I can't bring my truck to my house. That's what started all of this. So, I mean, I, I do everything to be courteous, and my liv, my livelihood is on moving dirt right now. And that's all I get to say. I don't go flying around. I have, I had little kids on tricycles, and I never backed over 'em in my yard at a year and a half old. And we run two trucks in there, and they know to stay away from 'em. I can't let my kids walk on Porfroam Road, cause everybody's going up in a Subaru Forester with Connecticut plates up to Prap Pond at fifty-five miles an hour to go to their camp that they bought. Can I post a road for no Subaru Foresters?
From Connecticut?
From Connecticut. I don't want Connecticut people up there. I can't do that. Come on.
Thank you. Sir?
Scott Hackett, River Road. There's two issues, it sounds like, obviously, the deterioration of the roads, one one, and the safety's the other. I'm not gonna speak to the roads, cause that's, that's not my forte. But as far as the safety issue goes, I think everybody's pretty much agreed that, you know, the speeding is a bad thing, whether it's a truck or a car or whatever. We've tried to get the police up there a couple of times, um, but, you know, didn't have the resources. I guess my question to you is, you know, if we sit here and go, "Yeah, speeding is a bad thing," everybody's kinda nodding their head, do we have the resources in the town to set something up so we can, you know, pick some of these guys off? Cause, you know, all these gentlemen that drove the big truck said, you know, "If a CDL guy gets nailed with a serious speeding ticket, it's gonna hurt, and they won't do it a second time." So, you know, do we, I mean, is the town able to, you know, put a cop down there for X amount of time? It doesn't seem like we've got excessive police officers in this town.
Yeah, yeah, point taken. We were definitely looking at that in this next budget cycle, and it all comes down to dollars and cents, like, in, in that, those terms, uh, with the enforcement. So, we're trying to catch up to it, and thought we're in a good spot, and...
Yeah, I'd like to add, it's not a unique thing. Uh, I live on Page Hill Road as well, I walk it every day. Uh, I let my kids ride bikes on it, it's risky, it's scary, it's life. But not only in New Ipswich, but drive-through, drive-through the state, driving to Mass, all these small towns, you'll see, slow down, my kids live here, because the towns, you know, we hear the complaints, but I don't know what more can be done to keep stacking laws, to try and limit it, adding stop signs down each road, I don't think so. And we try to address the complaints, and, but it's a, it's a universal struggle.
Ma'am? Just clarify, so just, I wasn't, I don't want more laws, I mean, as you guys said, we've got plenty of those, I think, it's more just a matter of the enforcement that exists.
Right, and, and I was acknowledging, it, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Ma'am?
Caitlin, um, I'm Flip on Westbrook Drive. I will say, I have, I do see police officers on that road, obviously, maybe more of a presence. Um, I go that way to bring my kids to school, and I do pass them occasionally, but maybe just more of a presence. But I also walk along lots of roads around town, and they're all busy. There's lots of traffic on every road, so, I mean, obviously, some may be worse than others, but I feel like you're dealing with, uh, cars and safety, you're dealing with it on every road in New Ipswich, aside from the town, or any other town, so...
Caitlin, what was your last name?
Sam. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I just had one other thing about the speeding, and as we have called the police, we've asked them if they would like to use our spot behind the trees to, and, you know, he mentioned one thing that, you know, with all, everyone with cell phones, they, soon as someone sees them, they posted that, "Hey, there's a police car there," you know, so we were dealing with that too. And Dave and I've been out trying, we've been out trying to clean off near the road or cut brush down, we have to put out orange cones, I mean, it, like, just, again, a lot of cars, but they're flying by. I mean, are they gonna take our word for it if they, if we give them a license plate, or, I mean, because we don't have a speed truck thing, but, I mean, we've got the horse signs up, we ask the town to put those up, you know, but people just ignore the signs, they really do. So, I've literally had so many cars in one hour fly by me, I won't say trucks, but cars fly by, just when I'm out on the side, and the thing that's dangerous down River Road is all the curves. They can't see you until they're already around the curve, and that's what makes it so dangerous. So, many of these other roads are straight, you can see, but when you can't see a car coming, running around, and you have to jump off the road, that makes it more dangerous. Especially if you're in a... Yes.
Sir?
I was thinking about the stone foundations, and I could understand that being a problem. I don't know if you can go down that road, but you're not passing through, would the heavy truck be doing any less vibrating if you're just going a half a mile down the road, or a mile? Like, I don't understand, I can understand not wanting your foundation to fall down, but wouldn't that mean posting the road so no trucks could ever go down there? I mean, if we're worried about a lawsuit because a stone foundation fell down, which I'm assuming was implied, um, how do you, so, trucks can go down there if they're making deliveries, and like we said, Amazon and fire engines, so how would you determine which truck, traveling all the way through the road, or just halfway down, actually vibrated the stone foundation apart, which has been there for a hundred and some odd years and hasn't fallen apart yet? But when it does, how, how can you tell legally which truck, traveling which distance? And also, I was thinking, maybe a posted weight limit isn't a terrible idea, but twelve-thousand pounds? I mean, an F-550 has a nineteen-thousand G V W. That means somebody in a one-ton dump can't even drive down that road. I don't think the causeway is gonna cave in from somebody's F-350, it has a fourteen-thousand G V W. I mean, tractor-trailers have an eighty-thousand-pound G V W. Yeah, maybe an eighty-thousand-pound truck shouldn't be passing through there, but, I mean, it's a big jump from twelve-thousand pounds to eighty-thousand pounds, there's a lot of stuff in there that's, you know, could possibly be going down that road, you know, pass through, even if they're not stopping on the road. You know, I, I don't know. I just feel like posting a road to twelve-thousand G V W is, that's, I mean, that's a pretty low G V W. I don't, I mean, I don't know what truck people have that pull horse trailers, but a six-thousand-pound trailer on an F-250, you're gonna be over twelve-thousand G V W. And I don't know if you're just passing through there, you wanna call the selectmen or the D P W to get a, a waiver, or, and is that some of you gotta do, like, once a year, or every load? Does anybody know the answer to the waiver, or the exception? Is that something I gotta get every time, drive-through? Or is that just like one time annually?
When I was involved in it with, um, Peter Goey, and somebody was getting a furniture delivery, and they had to call, talk to him, get permission to go down.
Yeah.
Um, and then, the next day, he was going to another house, had to call again.
Sure.
So, yeah, so I would say, from what it sounded like, it was every time you wanted to go down, yeah.
And then, once you get that waiver, your vibrations wouldn't ruin any stone foundations, it would just be the truck that did it.
Thank you. Yes.
Thanks. Colin Carroll, you know, I just wanted to, you know, offer a little bit of a retort, since a lot of the points that the gentleman just brought up were things that I mentioned in my comments. Yes, certainly, you know, you're not gonna be able to pinpoint what truck it was that was the straw that broke the camel's back. But what we're trying to talk about here is the volume. You know, if you're restricting it, you know, by whatever weight you choose that you think is appropriate, and certainly if six tons isn't it, then, you know, let's talk about what it is. What is, what is the, the really heavy truck traffic that really causes the vibration that does damage to our homes, to the town's infrastructure, et cetera? As far as the waiver provision goes, I mean, the statute is pretty broad on that. I think you could craft it however you'd like, talk to your, you know, town council, that's what they're there for. If you wanna make it a waiver that says, you know, X company going back and forth on River Road, you know, as long as they don't exceed X, you know, Rose Vehicle Weight has, you know, free rein to, to run up and down the road, great. These are all things that you can work out, but these are other solutions to the problems versus just a blanket, you know, a blanket revocation and, you know, having free rein on one particular road and potentially, you know, damaging that road. Um, like I said, that's, that's just what I wanted to kind of, you know, respond to the gentleman's comments on what I brought up, so...
Thank you. Do you know if there's more people out in the hall, or the outer room, that care to come in and speak?
Anyone else like to speak, or come in?
May I ask a question?
We've been on River Road.
Yes. Plenty of room in here.
I'm, I'm just gonna throw a number out, but if the weight limit on the road were set at, they take thirty-three thousand pounds, would that be more palatable?
I'm not a structural engineer, that question isn't for me. You guys have experts in consulting in order to come up with that.
Yes. Sir?
Kenny Letnan. I've been hearing a lot of talk about stone foundations and worried about them rattling loose, and my office building is built in eighteen oh eight, and it's all stone foundations sitting about forty feet off Turnpike Road with loaded dump trailers steady all day long, rattling my desk, and no rocks have come loose on my foundation yet, and it receives probably a hundred X, at least, the traffic River Road does, so, I don't think it's a valid concern, in my opinion.
Sir?
Matt Moran, Mountain Road. We've been hearing here, as it's all safety concern, I drive a large truck, very top-heavy. I cannot drive down roads at any speed that you can in a car safely. There's absolutely no way you can go speeding through Bank Village, around those corners, the truck I drive, you'd roll it over. It's not a big truck problem, it's cars driving too fast, and they're pushing it on the trucks to limit traffic on the road.
Thank you. Sir?
All right, Sam. Are you voting on this tonight?
I'm not sure yet. We, we haven't gone into, you know, deliberation, or... All right, is that your only question, Roger?
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna vote, I, some people aren't really... Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sir?
My name's Dave Brower, I live on Old Country Road. Uh, I have an F-350, uh, no, it's a thirty-five-hundred GMC duly. If I put my camper on it, it's, I don't know how heavy it is, but I wonder if I can get out of my yard that way, because I have to use River Road to get out. Um, the thing that bothers me, here are a couple of statistics, I took a ride up and down that road, there is a speed sign when you get off of Turnpike Road, says thirty miles an hour. There's no sign on that side of the road, all the way down to Ashby. So, there's no real reminder of people saying, "Hey, look, there's a speed limit going down." On coming back on the other side, there's a sign for thirty, and there's another sign for thirty-five, which is a little bit confusing as to what the speed is. I think that could use some review, let's say it that way. One of the other things that nobody's, I don't know, maybe other people have brought it up, but, the thing that bothers me, even at distance from that road, is the noise of the motorcycles. Now, I'm sure a lot of people like motorcycles, but, and I've had one myself, but, it seems as though it's kind of a raceway for motorcycles. And off the road, where I am on Old Country Road, I hear these guys rapping down the road, and I'm wondering what, if that's not a greater bother to the neighbors that live on River Road than, than, than the truck did. I don't, I don't know an answer to that, but I think it's somewhat of an issue. Done?
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Craig Smith, River Road. I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of very valid points, but I'm not hearing things that what, except for what Dave said for speeding, and who has some other mentioned this too. I don't, there's technology out there that we, that we can employ, and we're not doing it. If you've gone up to Shaw's up in Peterborough, round circle, you drop down, you get Groove's Roads to remind you that you're, you're speeding, and you're coming into a dangerous area. What does that cost? That hits, that hits everybody, that's one thing. There's speed cameras that you could use, we're not employing that. There's speed signs that flash and tell you that you're speeding, and we're not employing that technology either. And we have asked for you to have some additional controls put in that area, but because the town doesn't have the resources to have police all over the place, it's, it's a crapshoot. And speeding occurs with just about anybody, really. But it's the dangerous speeding, as Dave mentioned, but not just motorcycle, it's the cars. They, they just put their foot right down. And I'm not trying to say what the speed is, cause I don't know, but it's damn fast. My house does shake, rattle and roll a little bit, but I'm at the very beginning of where that speeding occurs, because once you get through the twisty roads, it's flat out, and that's where, uh, the heavier speeding occurs. Weights, if you please, just take into consideration the paper that Sharon put together, in terms of, cause Mr. Samiro asked, what's the difference between a car and a truck? It's all outlined in there with D O D, D O T, uh, limits and regs that go along with it. You've got resources that you can look at and employ those too. So, uh, it would be a shame, cause I, I don't want it to, my issue is not at them versus us. Just because I live there, that doesn't mean that I want something different than somebody else. But hey, let's just, at the, at the bottom line, let's just get some enforcement and apply that everywhere. Because I know the roads in, in this town suffer from the same type of issues that we are also seeing. Something needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
It's Josh Monen, Gibbs, uh, Gibbs App. Um, we're, I think we're shifting away from the, the topic of the hearing is the weight limit on, on River Road. So, to get back to that, where the speeding of big trucks, if that's not the issue, then that's, then, then that's not really the issue here. Then we go to, if you, if you shift everybody from River Road, and you're saying, "All right, the next available path would be Davis Village," that's not, you would have people going down, uh, Main Street, which is also a very small road with a sharp turn on it. House is very close, Old House is very close to the road, the historic building is not a new building, you know, there's, the church is very close. There's a lot of, there's a lot of building on that, on that road, and so now do you say, "Okay, we, we can't go on River Road because of the historic buildings on there, you know, the houses are old. Now, you can't use Main Street because the buildings there are old." Now, you're forcing everybody onto Davis Village. You know, that, what is the alternative then, other than going to Mass?
Thank you. Sir?
Stan Zabrick, eighty-one River Road. Uh, Main Street, one-twenty-three A is a state road, maintained by the state. Um, and just the, the, uh, issue of speed, maybe a well, a couple of well-placed speed bumps, uh, is the solution to the whole problem, on the speed problem. I don't know how you restrict trucks, I, like I said, my main concern is the causeway, and, um, the, you know, the, the weight going over the causeway constantly, and, um, it's up to the town, it's on the owners of the town to maintain that causeway. The less wear and tear, the better on the causeway. But as far as speed, a couple of well-placed speed bumps, like they have in Peterborough, I, it might be the solution for speed.
Thank you. Sir, in the back?
Yeah, Alpino, Smith Drive. And routing to one-twenty-three A, Main Street, Ashby Road, that would, to me, would be bad also, cause of that hill that Main Street and Smithville. If trucks were coming down that hill, you got a blind stop sign on the right, or if you were pulling out of Main, to either cross over or take a left out of Ashby, you really can't see up the hill either. Lot harder to stop a truck on a hill than it is to say, "Slow down on flat ground and just go slow." So, if you're taking them off of River Road and putting them there, probably more of a chance of a bad fatal accident there. Truck versus car than take...
Just one second. One. Yeah, there's...
We used to have a lot of speed bumps in the road, but we decided to fix the roads.
Classic. Is there anybody else in the hall that hasn't spoken yet? I'm not trying to skip over you.
Also, I wanna comment on the speed bumps, I don't wanna be following speed bumps, absolutely not.
Agreed.
No way.
And wouldn't that make, make the noise worse too, with the banging?
Mm-hmm. And you'll have the acceleration and... And you'll have the acceleration and stopping of vehicles too.
Guys, yeah, it's good.
Comment, thanks.
Yeah.
And we really don't want to become Peterborough.
I guess going back to the weight limit, I'm still confused that you can allow vehicles to go down there that exceed the weight limit to deliver goods and things, but the ones passing through would be, I mean, if we're really worried about the causeway collapsing or the maintenance of the causeway, shouldn't we just close the road to every truck? Or, I don't understand how, if it's okay for forty trucks, but it would be bad if forty-seven. I'm, am I missing something? You know, when I have been pulled over by the DOT and I have been overweight on a highway, it's a safety concern, but they just give me a ticket and send me on the way. I don't have to unload any dirt so I can continue as long as I pay the fine. So I don't understand how you can have trucks that exceed the weight limit if they're delivering or whatever. I don't need to go over that again. So, I mean, I guess just limiting the use of the road is going to save the causeway and the foundations? You know what I'm, I don't, I mean, I'm just curious of how it could be okay for some trucks and not okay for the ones that are just passing through if we're actually worried about the road falling apart. Because technically it would still fall apart with the ones dropping off goods on the road. So it's confusing for me. I mean, maybe, like I said, the specialist or the engineer said forty loads a day is okay, forty-five would be bad. I don't know. I guess that's, in my mind, something that I'm thinking about. I know I'm not making the decision, but, I mean, so it's okay for some people to go down, but it's not okay for other people. I would think if we're worried about the road collapsing, then we should just close the thing down to every truck that's too big to save the causeway. Anything over twelve thousand pounds, just shut the whole thing right down.
Sir, in the back?
Harley Copen in Willard Road. Does the board know how many roads are in New Ipswich that are town roads?
With the exact count offhand?
Yeah.
I don't know the exact count offhand.
Is it hundreds, thousands?
That's not thousands.
Okay, hundreds? So we're talking one road out of hundreds of roads in New Ipswich and we have to ban trucks on it?
Thank you.
Does that make any sense?
I would just like to make a point that a lot of times there is a job going on. So when seventeen trucks in one hour went by, that wasn't for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks on end. It was probably one day it was like that, or two days, and then it stops. And, you know, you have to take into account this job's going on and they pound the material in and then it's done. And it's over with. And maybe two trucks a day go through. Like, I have a hard time believing there's seventy-two trucks going down that road every day. I don't believe it because I go down there because I've been working on River Road delivering to the subdivision. I don't see seventy-two trucks on it. Usually it's two of mine and that's it. And they run six loads and it's done for the day. Or eight, or ten, or fifteen, and then we're done. So I'm not, I mean, I think it's a little bit of an exaggeration. Yeah, it's alarming when you get fifty loads in one day, but it isn't every day. And if it was every day, it would obliterate the road. It's not. It's sporadic. And that's what I've seen because I'm out there doing it, so I'm not really, I think a lot of it's a little bit of an alarmist situation.
And with a waiver, you could still do that?
Yes, with a waiver, if somebody's building a house, you could still go down there and go seventy loads.
It's just the guy going through that is going to wreck the causeway.
Thank you. So is there anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't had the opportunity to speak yet?
I believe there's people all the way out into the actual tax clerk office.
Yeah, tell them to come in.
Come on.
Anybody else?
Just Tom from New Ipswich. I don't mind paying my taxes to fix the roads. So when the causeway fails, you can use my money to fix it.
Well, we have it every time we fix it.
Sir, Eli Koponen?
I'll fix your road too.
Tom, thank you.
They accept donations also.
Eli Koponen of New Ipswich, thirty-eight Emerson Hill Road. About a month ago, I was going down River Road and there was a box truck coming in the other direction and there was three people on the box truck side of the road and the box truck stopped probably two hundred feet before the people and I was able to continue traveling through. The man in the box truck was very considerate to the people that were walking. And on another note, our question would be on the foundation. Ever since I was six years old, my grandfather had a stone foundation and he would have us mixing up mortar to patch any loose rocks or holes that the mice could crawl through. And his house is probably two thousand feet off of 119.
Eli, just address the board, please.
So there's, his house is two thousand feet off of the main road 119 where there would not be trucks going around his house. And he was still having issues with a stone foundation falling apart. So with that thought, I think we all need a reality check and understand that we are living on planet Earth and stuff is going to decay. But in the meantime, we still have to live life and provide for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else out there? Peter, did you go all the way to Akinac?
Yeah, they're checking back there to see if there's more people.
Can you patch this around to dead?
In a minute, Lou. Lou, do you mind going out just to double check for us? I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity and has access to the room. One second. When Lou comes back. Just one moment. When Lou comes back, and thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Granny. So if you ever thinking that's my view, please, by all means, come on, I just put you on.
Thank you for chatting. Sir? If we could all just quiet down?
Matt Moran again, Matson Road. Here are issues of concerns as the causeway deteriorating from vehicle traffic, including car traffic travel over it. Perhaps they should end the road at Old Country Road so they can continue on Old Country Road and leave and put it, end the road at the end of the causeway, at the last driveway on River Road, so there's no through traffic over the causeway, so no more issues. And that will pretty much eliminate any through vehicle traffic on River Road. That is a major concern.
Thank you.
Everybody not wanting to be able to travel through.
Sir?
Yeah, I'm Ray Aho and I live on Turnpike Road and I own a construction firm. I like that comment that Eli had is, I think it's time for a reality check. If people hear that, this is, this is our business. We have, we have equipment. We have to be able to move it around. And, and yeah, it's great that the selectmen are giving this opportunity for people to air their concerns, but closing a road, this is unbelievable. This is not even America. This is what happens. We can just close roads and because somebody's, somebody is concerned with the vehicles that come down the road. I mean, I just, I'm baffled at some of the comments that are made.
Thank you.
Procedural question. Have you taken written comments at all? Do you want written statements or anything like that for consideration?
Sure, yeah. Killed it a couple emails.
I mean, I think I pretty much read all of what I wanted to say, but there's definitely citations to studies and things like that that I would like to be part of the official record that are in my statement.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that hasn't spoken yet that would like to have a chance to speak on this?
Jeff Klein?
Yes.
Just wanted to be on the record saying I'd closed the road restrictions and agree with all the comments.
Thank you. Second call. So I see some faces have been here that haven't spoken yet, but you don't have to. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Certainly a lot of, you know, great points brought up this evening. A lot of it really, you know, kind of got away from the topic of weight limits, like once the dialogue was able to be had for a while. Like I said, this is just my opinion, so. Speeding, definitely an issue. And we can definitely look into heightened enforcement on River Road and some of the other roads and maybe incorporating some updated technology, which was a comment that was made earlier, which, you know, flashing signs and things are great, but, you know, people tend to start to ignore those as well.
Or steal them.
Yeah, or take them. Certainly a good point too of the contradicting speed limits and missing signage. So that's a good point to look into as well. You know, at this point, I don't see any reason to reinstate the weight restrictions on River Road. And I wanted to get my fellow select board members' opinions as well.
Am I allowed to clarify the speed limit on River Road?
Sure, yes, Peter.
Okay. So what you got is Bank Village is posted at thirty and then when you move on to the, towards the causeway, then it goes up to thirty-five for that rest of the section of River Road. So there is two speed limits on there.
There are two signs going from Ashby Road up that way. There's one going down that's at thirty miles an hour and it's down at the base by Turnpike Road. And from there on, there are no signs all along that road until you get to Ashby Road.
Okay, yeah. But that's, that's what it, where it is, is it's, Bank Village is thirty, thirty-five out of Bank Village.
I think I know what you're saying, like maybe when you come on from like current point, no sign of it.
It's all right. Peter engaged, that's fine. My meeting, thank you though. I appreciate it.
Probably should have another sign up there.
All right. Louise, please. All right. Lou, Jason, you know, certainly under a hint of motion.
Yeah, just my thoughts, I think it's quite surprising really to me how many people came out in opposition of us imposing the weight limits. And I think the points made were hard to ignore. So I would agree. I see no, no reason for us to reinstate weight limits.
Lou?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right. So we're not going, there's no motion made and like to reinstate the weight limits on River Road. And so as it currently stands, is the way it sits now. All right, so I thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the other comments.
Nothing says go back to thirty-five. No, it doesn't.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking any action.
Thank you for coming out. Yeah, well, no, it just doesn't mean, it's a good comment. I'm sure they spoke about the waivers.
But that's almost, it's assigned for thirty mile an hour going south.
Well, all the waivers, trucks, school buses, anybody that would receive the waiver from March.
It tells you that it's a thirty mile an hour road. But, you know, people make a lot more of it.
It's these school buses that are doing it. Well, you know, my objection to it is.
But I really think that when you get up to the next.
The discussion was really for the public to be able to say, so I just didn't want to get too involved, except where I thought I had to clarify, but.
And coming back to originally.
But the waivers ask for.
There's a thirty.
Probably.
Yeah, a little bit.
I have. It's another layer of red gate. Harder and harder and harder and I can't stand it.
Are you still on the?
All right, yep.
Thanks for your service.
I will, I'm glad to.
Because I might get cut by the tongue. You've got to authorize how many minutes.
Oh, we should, sir.
Yeah.
So good.
Eight forty-five.
Ten minutes.
Not, well, not quite.
Hanging in though. I feel a lot better. Like before, I couldn't even like stand up. The first few days I was in the.
That's a nice.
I was just kind of tired.
See you guys later. You did a great job with me. Thanks, man. You did a great job. Have a good night.
There you go. Whatever. No, but it's all right. It's getting better. They gave me two pounds of antibiotics. And. And then an inhaler.
Are we still in a meeting?
Well, we're taking a break until eight forty-five.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What else have we got left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Old, new business.
Round table discussion.
Yes, sir.
Get some more information.
Yes, I saw your voicemail.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So you leave a voicemail that goes to my email?
I thought throwing out the thirty-three thousand pound number.
That's where David Caroline said, you know, this guy got pulled over all of a sudden. And so that's another problem with it.
Well, and it contradicts that element of everyone having access or no one, like you can't just restrict one. It's the funny thing that the state puts us in, like these points of contradiction and.
This is in the March-April timeframe?
They still do, they did this year because the ground never froze, so it didn't thaw.
Oh, okay. But it's been years since I've seen those, any of those sites.
I think they, not, not this past year, but the year before they were.
Yeah, they did, but when the roads don't freeze, then.
Well, yeah, my, my road used to have it all the time, and it stopped probably about eight, nine years ago.
Interesting.
And the, the road shows a lot of damage because of it.
Yeah, I can see, especially on that hill.
Yeah.
Or both hills, really, yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, I don't know if he has a list, he must have a list of the seasonal closures, so it might, it might be worth just inquiring and saying, hey.
Asking about it.
Yeah.
I should bring, I don't know what the road committee, I'm, I'm attending the next road committee, supposing.
December sixth, oh, I'm supposed to be.
Supposing that, you know, I'm not falling sick like you did.
Oh, geez.
But, yeah, is that a part of their, their scope?
No, it could be, this is what I explained to them before and other people that I asked. Whatever the committee would like to, and this is just how I've gone about things, is that if a committee would like to have oversight over something, it's certainly a discussion that the board can have, and they can change the tone of their committee. So the committee from prior, the prior two or three years that I was there, didn't want anything to do with anything but selecting which roads were going to be reconstructed. So that was, yeah, and fine for them. You know, but if new people come on and they want to take on a bigger chunk, because, you know, Peter's on it too, so.
Yeah.
It's all part of that discussion, I'm sure he wouldn't mind sharing the workload, so to speak, uh.
Yeah, and getting more involved.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll see, it'll be my first meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll have to take my recorder.
Oh, it's a public meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I have to do, I owe two minutes for it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it is a public meeting.
But I'm off that day. Actually, I have vacation day, and I have to be.
It's December sixth.
I didn't mean to just throw it at you that day, are you comfortable with that?
Um, I was, no, I brought it up.
No, I know, yeah, but that was, I said, I was gonna step away, like.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, all right.
And, and it was in the same, same vein of respect for what you've done there, that I said I'm not trying to impose myself, but I, you know.
Yeah.
Not giving you the move.
Yeah.
By saying I'm going to be there, so, so it's good.
I understand that, oh, that's good, good. I liked it, I don't mind. All right, so. Round table stuff. Debbie, did you have anything for us?
Um, I have a couple. Uh, yeah, so I got, I know you said to keep this for the Warren articles, but I got two letters from the city of Keene about the hazardous ways program. One says our fee is seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars for participation in all twenty-four collections, less available grant funds. And then the other letter, identical to the first one, same thing, all twenty-four collections, says one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars less available grant funds. So I called Duncan, is his name, over there, and he had gone for the day, so I wrote the message, so to hold on to these, because it's twelve hundred bucks, that's not a big deal. If it's seventy-two hundred dollars, that's a big deal.
Well, that's what, last year there was a drop that felt like it went into half, which was weird, because I think.
That was my fault.
The six to seven thousand range. No, but I think it was based off of a letter.
It was.
So I don't know where the, you know, like now you have two letters in front of you, so it'll be interesting to see where that falls.
See what he says about that.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was it. Oh, um, actually, oh, no, I can't be off next week.
Why?
Because the new software people are coming in for training.
Tomorrow in here.
On the, on the fourth, the whole week they're gonna be here. See, I can never take a vacation.
Yeah, that's, so the, uh, the road meeting is next Wednesday at three.
Yeah.
Why don't you take a two-week leave over Christmas?
I'm taking Christmas week off.
You can't do that.
That'll give me three vacation days out of my ninety-six.
Take the week before also.
Jeez.
As long as you hear Christmas Day, you don't care.
The week before, the twentieth, I sent out the email for the Christmas party, did you get that?
Yes.
That's the twentieth, yeah.
Okay, was that, were it okay?
I think so.
What kind of food are we getting this time?
Italian.
Italian.
Either El Forno or Giorgio's, I gotta call.
Sounds good.
See if anybody can deliver or whatever.
Giorgio's is more Greek than Italian.
It is.
Yeah.
I like Giorgio's too, though.
I do too, so I'm gonna call, and somebody said they had El Forno delivery at one time, so I'll see if that's, because that would be amazing.
Another place that's got real good Italian food is Pasta Bari.
Yeah.
Do you know of there?
Yeah, they're pretty good, kind of pricey though. Um, but anyway, so I sent it out to everybody, so if you're in contact with any boards or volunteers, I, I tried, I don't have everybody's email for every board and every volunteer and all that, so I said, in my letter, I did say, you know, if there's someone that's on a board committee, volunteer, whatever, that should be invited, please extend the invitation.
I should have Tina give you.
I don't have, oh, I did, I did, I sent it to her, Elaine and Joanne.
Did you?
Yes.
Oh, because I looked through the contacts, I didn't see them, but that would be plenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if anybody else, I don't know anybody else's email.
I'm gonna take a picture of this. Round table discussion, Green Center was voted in to have a revolving fund. They were gonna talk about it, because they've been told that there's no legal reason for them to be there and be in this book. So they were gonna talk about it this, um, when they meet to figure out how much money they're paying to offset, offset the heat bill there, so.
What Warren article is that?
Article nineteen and twenty-fourteen, and I'll share it with the.
So I think, I don't know if the issue is that it may not be an allowed revolving fund? Because there's, that's, uh, that's kind of specific, um, what you can set them up for. Because I was going through my mind a couple of few years ago, like, everybody should get a revolving fund, it's like, and then you can take donations and fundraise and it's not a part of anything, like it's their own money to offset. You know, the, um, general fund budget, but you can't, like, there's no specific purposes.
Pursuant to RSA thirty-one ninety-five H.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
It's kind of like funny, two thousand fourteen wasn't that long ago, and I can remember, ever since I've been coming to these meetings over the last decade or so, that, that's come up, like the Green Center stuff's come up. So it's within that same period that it was established, so.
Interesting.
I have taken the time to, I didn't realize it was a Warren article.
Yeah, I didn't either.
And it says the town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund.
Yeah.
And shall pay out the same only upon order of the board of selectmen, and no further approval is required by the legislative body, so. Uh, according to this article, they would have to run all of their expenses or whatever they, I think they like have bought a shop act to clean and shelves, and then they.
I've not ever known any oversight of anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, like it's just sort of treated as its own, it works, don't touch it, yeah.
It seems to be, but then it bothers the com, the committee that there's these, I don't know if you call them accusations or questions that just linger over their, uh, project.
Yeah.
You know, it bothers them, and they don't want it, so. This will help a little bit, as usual. You cast some doubt and say, well, that's subject to interpretation, and maybe that RSA doesn't.
Well, no, I, I don't know, yeah.
You, but I mean, everybody, I mean, this is the nature of this.
And you know me, I'm a huge proponent of it, and I was, you know, lobbying for them a long time ago, so, yeah, it's not, I just, yeah.
Right, and I didn't mean that you were against, I mean, I meant, uh, you bring up the fact.
Yeah.
That we think we knew, and then there's always somebody saying, well, that's not really what the RSA says, or misinterpreting.
Yeah, just because, you know, people vote on something, doesn't mean it's lawful.
It doesn't mean it's binding.
Yeah, or binding, yeah.
I have a question, it just dawned on me while you guys were chatting about that. That, um, the warrant articles, we always come out with a warrant article to accept the money from the state for the roads.
That's another one.
So since we're getting these generators from DOD, do we need to set up a warrant article to agree to accept the generators?
No, because it's not cash, it's not fun, it's not unanticipated funds, that's why we.
I would think you, you're probably right, that we're supposed to authorize any received gifts, whether we want to give.
If some, if somebody wants to, to gift some land, it's got to be authorized.
I think so.
So the selectmen have the authority to accept that.
But in signing that paper, that, whatever that liability release, I would say we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
But on that generator topic, how does ARPA work with that, and what happens to the funds, did they say unused funds are gonna be returned, or?
That's twenty-twenty-six, I think it was.
If you don't allocate, and if you don't allocate the funds by twenty-twenty-four, and you don't use the funds by twenty-twenty-six. Anything that you have left over has to go back, so we need to start writing some checks.
But was that, um, installation of them generators, uh, a COVID relief fund? Was it viable?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could use the ARPA funds to.
Right.
To do the installation.
Yeah, not touching any of the capital reserve.
Right.
Money.
Yeah.
You know, I should get out my notebook.
That's a great idea, Jason.
I should get out my notebook, no, and I bring that up in a, there was a sarcastic tone to it, this is good use of COVID relief money. I should take out my notebook and see what the national debt was when I read it off that meeting and see what it is today, I bet it's gone substantially higher.
Yeah.
And we played a part in it, amen.
Yeah. Don't get me going.
So the whole one hundred percent of the country, even the towns that didn't take it.
There was some.
Yeah.
They played a part in it too.
How?
Because the money is, it's just there.
No, that's, that's the wrong idea, imagine if fifty percent of them didn't take it, that money would.
That, that's something.
No, it would, it would be divided between the towns that did.
What did you say, if you don't spend it, what happens with it?
If you don't spend it, you have to return it to the treasury.
And that they.
Point made.
Then they disperse it.
Anyways, it's a moot point.
Yeah, put it down.
It is a moot point.
They'll probably disperse it to.
It's a moot point.
Anyways, yeah.
I still stand behind that.
We stabbed it with a steely knife.
Yeah.
This future of our country.
Still can't kill the bees.
What's that?
I said, but we still can't kill the bees.
All right.
Hotel California.
If we can get them.
All right, hold on.
Yeah.
We get back, like Rangel said, because Ron's hanging out, it looks like, so.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, Ron, yeah, um, so Debbie, did you have anything else?
No, just the, um, we're going live with the new, uh, software on the fourth, so, we'll.
Nice. Fingers crossed.
I, I just, I, I can't, it's insane.
Well, you have to be better, like on those days that you take, you have to, maybe you need a separate cell phone or something that you do your work stuff on, and then you just put it in a drawer and walk away from it.
No, but like I can't miss, I was gonna take next week off, but I can't miss the training.
And, well, that's, so that's a can't miss scenario, right?
Yeah.
But then when you're like on death's door, and you're still conducting business at home and stuff, which.
I know.
You have choices.
That is, no, and I definitely, I made that choice, yes, I agree.
And you have to get better about that, that's what I'm saying, if there's, there's got to be some solution, don't have emails, go through your watch, you know?
Yeah.
In your phone, like you gotta shut it down on your own, allow yourself to take a break.
You can set up a se, a second, um, electronic SIM on your, on your car.
Yeah.
And have a separate one.
Mm-hmm. I can. Anyways.
All right.
Make it happen, Captain.
You set up your phone yet?
No, it's still in the drawer.
I'm gonna have to call your wife.
Really?
Get her on that.
Yeah.
Okay, anyways, we're divert, diverting again.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Jason?
I had two things come from Peter, one, I asked the question, I don't know, during our little break before the public hearing, the policy for the selectmen, Peter was wondering. He got a price for, uh, starting work on the fire department, and it is under five thousand. It's like three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven for repairing the roof, and he asked me, do I give it the go-ahead? And I said, this was yesterday, so I said, just let me ask the board, I believe it's such a small number, and getting it moved on this year would be the right thing to do.
Yeah, because the money's going towards.
And it's something that we wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's not roofing on accessory buildings, it's that.
This is that batch that had a water problem.
Okay.
He asked me about that today too, and I told him the same thing, just do it, if the money's there, just do it, they already said they needed it, you know, this money was put aside for that, so do it.
However, like Sean said, there is a policy somewhere.
Yeah.
That says if it's more than five thousand. Then it comes to this table.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be presented with PowerPoint.
No.
Well, just at that point too, you would like three quotes.
Right.
And in, in general, if it's something that warrants, it's always better to get multiple quotes before doing anything, like from different vendors or companies. Uh, it just strengthens, you know, the department's head's decision or this board's decision in order to why we made a selection, you know, the way we did, so.
So then the other item was after we voted on the prime roofing, doing the, uh, the pool house. I don't know if there was a conversation here, yeah, I think from here, it was like, okay, we gotta be a little more clear what we're looking at when we talk about this roof over. Going over the layer of shingles, so I met out there with Peter and, um, someone from Prime Roofing, and there was a, there was a little bit of misunderstanding. And so the price changed for that alternate, and I know we had in our motion to accept prime as the bidder, or awarding the contract, there was a number attached to that motion. That number has changed to seventy-two twenty-four.
Do you remember what it was?
Sixty. Sixty-four or something.
So the motion was also to approve a hundred dollars a sheet if there was any.
Or the, um, yeah, the exclusions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so each, for each sheet of, applied, and needed to be replaced.
Right.
So what, so why is the, I don't understand why they went up by eight hundred or a thousand dollars just off of asking, because it, there, there's no additional clarity. they went up by eight hundred or a thousand dollars just off of asking, cause it, there, there's no additional clarity to what it is, this is the go-over.
Oh, the difference that, that came in was it was, uh, the drippage.
Yeah.
Yeah, replacing all the drippage on the.
Drippagey?
Yeah.
They're not putting on, well, there's probably no place to take it, they're not putting man cutters on it?
No. And that's where the bulk of it came.
So was that like something that somebody felt like should be done, like?
Yeah, well, the, the existing drippage is rusted. And I, when I met down there, I said, I think this stuff has to be replaced. And then I was told by other contractors, you can buy an oversized drippage and put it on. And was advised, no. You can, but people will say, why?
Yeah.
In, in other words, it wasn't very aesthetically pleasing. And so now that what they're looking at is having to go under the shingles, pull off the old drippage, and then put the new drippage over the existing shingles.
So I don't know why you wouldn't just go over it.
What do you mean, and leave the drippage?
Yeah, they do more damage, lifting stuff up, and, you know, they're all brittle shingles, and in my opinion, whereas we just, I've never cared, I haven't done roofing in a decade, but like we always just, if we could do a go-over, just put a new piece of drippage over it, if it covered right, or you get like that oversized one, and, cause you're basically, the way we do it is put the drippage on, ice and water shield, underlayment, and then shingles, you know, so you're not even really
Not pull off the old.
trying to allow water to get down to that base layer.
Right.
Ever anyways.
Right, and this doesn't include, I told them, we wouldn't want the, don't need the ice and water shield. There's no heat in that building.
Well, if you're taking the old, um, shingles off, you do.
But, but you're not, that's what we're talking about.
So, okay, so.
So there would just be a synthetic underlayment over the shingles to give a little.
So can't they just put the dri- drippage onto that? Instead of lifting up and taking the old one?
There is, I mean, you can go around on it.
Okay, so all they're doing is over-shingling it?
Yeah, except for replacing the drippage with some aluminum drippage, is what that price is.
Alt to go over, just bring the shingle roof with new certainty by, by, by mark shingles. So that's, at that price, it's seventy-two twenty-four, like you said. However, it doesn't, there's nothing that says here that it's really gonna get, um, the synthetic roofing. The synthetic material. Uh, because that's part of the original replacement of shingles.
Yeah.
So it's still a lot of damage, right?
And by, by a fair amount.
Yeah, I would ask for, you know, that, that this get, um,
Revised.
revised, to be a lot clearer.
Include the synthetic underlayment.
Really, what should have happened with that then is scrap option one, and just have a, have a quote based on the alternate.
On the alternate, but what is that alternate actually going to be?
Yeah, and we, we talked it over, and after we talked, Mr. Sepulveda was like, well, I'm glad we talked, because now we know. And it was, and I re- I told him, well, see how that comes out, because it originally, there was a revision given, I don't, I think Peter asked for it, and there was more. That's when I said I wanna meet them there so they can know, we can talk together, and I really wanted his input, is this a wise thing to do? You know, going shingle over, and he agreed that it was, it was an ideal roof to do it on.
Yeah.
So then we just worked out the nitty-gritty stuff, and I asked him to do this. This is what he came back with, I didn't negotiate, I wasn't a part of it, and I really only inserted myself, because I've done many re-roofs, but I've been out of the industry for a long time. And I just wanted to help Peter up in getting this price, and it's been a little bit of a, a learning curve. And the next time is gonna be a lot smoother for him.
Yeah.
It's just his first go-around, and, and it, and it was.
Yeah, like I said, I, I still would like to see it rewritten, because now there's a ten thousand thirty-eight dollar, um, total here, and we don't know what it's for. And the one part about, hold on, the one part about, um, uh, or on the downside, is that if you're re-roofing, um, shingle over shingle, you really don't know if you have any rotten, um, plywood.
And that's, we, we inspected the roof from the underside. It's fully exposed.
And you can tell, like when you walk on it, if something's not right.
Well, and that's, you can't really tell until you walk on it.
Well, no, but you can see rod.
Yeah, depending. Well, like you said, the underside's all wide open.
It's wide open, there's no ceiling in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we crawled from one end to the other with flashlights looking at it.
That's fine.
So we did our best, you know, short of ripping all the shingles off.
Yeah, that, that's fine, cause I'm sure, so they're happy with it.
Yeah, it seemed good.
Clean that up into, to, to just say exactly what they're going to do, that they're going to re-shingle over. And if they're going to actually put a synthetic layer of plastic over it.
We could put a note on there. And sign it and send it off. Give it to Debbie to, give it to Peter, if you guys want it to.
Cause to make sure that they don't get any leaks, they can always put that synthetic stuff between the two sets of shingles.
Alright, I have terrible handwriting. Do you wanna write a couple of things on that, Debbie? Just, you know, based off of what Jason's saying, like to include underneath the alternate.
Yeah.
So this would get crossed.
This whole thing, one through eight, night, thank you so. So this whole thing is crossed off. And then under alternate.
We'd put, um,
Price will include.
Remove and install new drippage, new white aluminum drippage.
Remo- you want me to say remove?
Remove old. That's what they, that's what they wanted to do. I guess that whole thing, I didn't look at it close enough. You can never look at stuff close enough.
Well, I'm assuming, some of the things in the top section probably apply, but.
They probably do.
Yeah, it's just not noted that way.
Yeah.
And then the, um, what did you say, install synthetic?
Yeah, synthetic underlayment.
Yeah. We do have a PDF of this. Uh, I just like, coming towards the end of the year, and if they wanted to try and get it done this year, I'd have.
So what is this, we please? Is that for that?
It's for.
It's just written really weird.
Yeah. That was this. So, then we circle this.
So, and this too, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah. And actually hoisting and cleaning up. So I guess they had it right here. You didn't even have to write it, you could print off a new sheet.
So I'll make a motion to approve the new amount. Once the contract is tweaked to our liking. Yeah, this is about eight hundred dollars higher than the other one, now I understand why, so we just have to get that level of detail on there. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, favor?
Alright.
Okay, so just get them details in there and.
And then have, have them resubmit it.
Yeah, so Debbie, she knows what we're looking for out of it now. So once you get it back or whatever, just, you know, shoot it off to us and.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sure.
But it's authorized.
Yeah, it's authorized.
We're not signing this though.
No.
We could sign there.
Very marked. Crossed out things.
Then this is your copy.
Yeah, for your notes.
So am I, are you contacting them for this, or am I?
I'll let Peter know that we authorized it.
Okay. So, okay.
I think Sean just asked if you could. Did you?
Yeah, follow-up.
Who did you talk to?
He talked to Garrett Sepulveda. Although somebody else wrote that quote. Who did?
Alright, so I'll tell, I'll tell Peter to call them and whoever he contacted, and this is what we wanted to say, and you guys will sign, then you'll sign it.
Well, yeah, like in that alternate section, we want like a little detail of the work that's gonna be performed. So seventy-five percent of what's at the top. I'm sure.
He told me to cross out the top.
Yeah.
Oh, cause the first line is to remove the shingles.
Okay, Debbie, I'll talk to them. It'll be easier, I have other business to discuss with them regarding the town as well.
Okay, who seconded that?
Lude.
Yeah, that was all I had, I was, uh, at that CIP meeting last night, it was pointed out that we really should go over all the verbiage of the cap.